All right, welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. David, do we want to -- actually, I'm going to make a quick amendment to the agenda for those in the audience who may be interested in talking about 4th grade enrollment. David is going to include that in his superintendent's report, and we were going to move that up to comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda, to right after that, so basically 3A, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So with that information, knowing that you'll hear from our superintendent on 4th grade enrollment, are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda?
Quick question in regards to your point.
Sure.
Once David speaks, will we then be --
Yes. Yes, thank you for clarifying. Great. All right, announcements.
Yes. That's all right, I'll take it. So I have three announcements. Tomorrow morning, the board should know that we have a C-SPAN bus that's coming to visit the high school and middle school. It'll be somewhere within the parking lot, and Patrick Burke and Carson Slentor will be hosting some conversation around it. Really, it's about voice and opportunity to stay involved and gain information. I don't know all of the details of the C-SPAN bus, but this is a national effort that they have to help educate and collaborate with schools. So that's going to happen tomorrow, starting at 8:30, and will go till noon. I want to announce that we have hired a new healthy school coordinator that will oversee mentorship, mindfulness, wellness, and "We All Belong." And "We All Belong" is our equity, diversity, and inclusion, and that person, that position is going to be filled by Susie Merrick. So we want to welcome her to that position. The other final announcement is I want to announce that I did receive a letter from John Stewart, our business manager, that affected June 30th. He will retire. And there's all kinds of emotions that go along with that, but we've got a lot of work to do between now and then, and he obviously is wanting to let us know that, you know, appropriately, so we can begin to plan and transition. So that's a lot, but it is an announcement, and it is right, and John wants to do a good job to inform people. So that's all I have for announcements, although that's not really the right way to say that. There's a lot in there, so.
Well, I know we got a little bit out of order already, but I will, on behalf of the board, we'll have an opportunity, John, to celebrate your contributions to the district, but it would be, it pains me that we have to accept your resignation, but it has been an honor to be working with you. I'll look forward to the next finishing of that, the school year, working with you, and the district is really, really privileged to have you onboard. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I just want to say that the position of business manager, I think, will be highly sought after, and it's a wonderful position, and I'll do all that David asks and you ask in planning for the change, and I'll continue to give it my whole heart throughout the year.
Thanks, John.
It's kind of a long, you know, long notice, so anyway.
All right, so we're going to go to the superintendent's report, as I actually had committed to and already deviated from, so that we can honor those of you who are in the audience to talk about 4th grade enrollment.
So I think, actually, you probably have these at your place, but I'm not sure, but it's a memo from me that I've been working on, I worked on today, and I want to essentially just go through it for you and then answer, leave time at the end for you to ask questions of me. And again, this is specific to the Rick Marcott Central School, grade 4 class size for this year, and bear with me while I just kind of read through my notes here. But staffing decisions and allocations of resources to appropriately support quality instruction in every South Burlington school classroom is something that the administrative team and I work closely on. Specific to Rick Marcott Central School, I've been aware of the current 4th grade class size as a cohort has been growing, slightly larger every year. When in kindergarten, they had 52 students, 57 in 1st, 64 in 2nd, 69 in 3rd, and we expected 69 or 70 this year. This summer, seven additional students entered 4th grade at Rick Marcott, and they, as I articulate here below, three students are from within the district, two from out-of-state or country, one from another school in Vermont, and one from a private school in South Burlington. Rick Marcott Central School Principal Brent Kuhn, new to the job, has kept me informed of the increasing enrollment, and we have had ongoing dialogue about how best to support the increased number of students. Important to note that as all seven students did not register at the same time, after discussion with Mr. Kuhn, I did add some additional support to the 4th grade, that being a .5 para educator to support those classrooms. Given the unexpected influx of the students, I will be recommending to the board on the 16th of September that an additional teacher be added to support the students in 4th grade at Rick Marcott, and I want to tell you a little bit more why that is. Mr. Kuhn has been very involved, again, communicating with the classroom teachers. He's met with them several, on several occasions. He's been pleased, obviously, he's creating a relationship with them and getting to know them, but has been pleased with the level of collaboration professionalism that each have shown. They did talk about the increased class size, obviously. For this grade level, they articulated the goal was absolutely to meet the needs of all students. The present class size of these classes does not allow them to best meet the needs of the students in the following way. Some of those highlighted changes. Allowing for adequate and equitable share time has definitely been difficult. Lack of ability to really make personal connections, obviously, as the larger the class size is, it makes it more difficult. The wait time, obviously, in moving a big body of students around certainly is an area of concern, but I think most importantly has been one that has gained a fair amount of concern to me, and that is the square footage. You know, there's seven, these classrooms are 765 square feet, so the ability, you now need to put some additional adults in there, up to including 30 bodies in total. You have to minus out some of the furnitures, furniture in the movement. You can begin to calculate that there's not an awful lot of room. You can get down to 25 square feet per student, then you've got to add in desks. You can clearly understand that the class sizes that we currently have at Rick Marcott are not large enough. Obviously, morning meeting, circle time, et cetera, makes it difficult to pull students together. The use of project rooms become difficult based on the student needs, and again, I reiterate the 30 bodies. So at this point, again, I think that it's important that I leave you a little bit of time to ask me some questions specific to this. I want to just highlight some of the additional information that I provided. The second page pulls in the FTE work page that we often use, you've seen it probably before, has every one of our elementary schools, including a summary of the district, on the bottom. We've included our policy on actual class size in the box to the right, and then what those guidelines are. So at Central, you see currently with applying both the 4th and 5th grade numbers, in aggregate not to exceed 20, you see we're at 18.6. And so then you, or 18.6 for K through 3, and 22.3 for 4.5. So again, we're not over that limit, but clearly, when you have to take the 76 and divide by 3, that's where you get to 25, 26, and 26. So the second page is just the articulation of the agreement, the policy G6, that is part of our work. And then the third page simply just gives you a further look back, all the way back to 2008, '09, to give you a little bit of some additional trend data that we have used. I think that this certainly highlights some questions, ideas, likely on your part, around, as you look at the other schools, we have lower levels of enrollment in other classrooms, which you would say those are on the low side, these are on the high side. Again, it likely points to you asking me those questions that are centered around master planning and visioning and school configurations in South Burlington, which we'll continue to be talking about. So let me pause and answer any questions that the board has at this time.
David, just my clarification. The three students from schools within our district, are they a result of the AYP provisions?
Not necessarily, Dan. I didn't, I wasn't able to totally disaggregate that. That certainly has been a variable in play, but I don't want to say all three. Sometimes families move into a different, into our different area.
So could be intra-city moves.
Right. I haven't had time to look into those specific three and what that, we still, as you know, we do have choice that's still in play in our district, so that remains a likely probability still with Central School, where they could be receiving students from either Orchard or Chamberlain.
Now, can you help me with the arithmetic that gets us from 76 divided by 3 to some number like 22.3, and how do we get any of those numbers up to 30 people in the classroom?
Yeah, so what happens, Dan, in the policy, remember, not to exceed 25, so that's the 76 plus the 58, divided by the 6 gives you the 22.3.
Fourth and the 5th grade.
Fourth and 5th grade combined enrollment divided by the six teachers gives you the 22.3. And again, the policy talks about your optimal ranges in that 16 to 20, not to exceed 25. So you're over the optimal, you haven't exceeded the 25, however, for that particular grade group, that is an area. And I want to say that, you know, when you have larger cohorts moving through, where we may say that in some cases, the cohort, that number, the number for this year is below, it is also looking at the cohort tracking over time. This has been a larger group, starting in that kind of 2nd and 3rd grade year. Again, I think, had I had this information at budget time, we probably, we would have been allocating the resources differently, but we didn't have that. I also want you to know that it's not an easy, quick thing to add a, you know, a quick teacher right out of the beginning, because again, a lot of thought and care have been put into the placement for students into their, into their next-year classrooms. That said, the recommendation that I'm presenting obviously has to have some work done behind it, because now you have to add another classroom teacher while we've, we're at day eight in the school year, and how's that going to, how is that going to be filled as a process that I'll be having to work with Mr. Kuhn, if in fact, the board approves it on the 16th of September?
So my understanding right now is we're technically not out of compliance with policy, but I would express a concern that our policy isn't written to adjust for some of the rationale of why you're recommending additional staff, so I'm wondering if we could even administer our policy, if the same issue were to come up in any other facility, by way of example, physical space.
Yeah, again, your policy provides the fabric and framework, and I think there's a fair amount of flexibility with that. That said, you know, we do need to look at individual grades. We have always had kind of this complexity of three schools, you know, and some of the things that come along with cohort, cohort numbers moving through our system.
And then, is there a plan with the additional staff that's already been added?
That's part of the conversation as well. I mean, that was an add, whether that, we'll have to talk more about where that is and whether or not that could either, you know, be reduced. Again, I want to be sensitive to this, you know, what I'm providing you as a proposal tonight and allowing you the opportunity away, and you haven't had a lot of time to think about this, so.
So the information that we received on the 31st shows that across the district, the K through 5 enrollment is down 23. Is that accurate still with the addition of those students at Central?
I believe that's correct. John, can you, do you know?
It's down, the latest, it changes daily, but it's down 20. There are, yes, it's down.
So enrollment in the elementary schools is down 20?
Yes.
And we already added one FTE. Does that include the half of FTE at Central?
The half FTE that's been added before? It wasn't a teacher add, so it's not in that sheet. It's a para professional.
So one teacher add, a half of a para add, and you're proposing, David, you're going to add or make a recommendation on the 16th for another FTE teacher, correct?
Correct. And again, I haven't put a lot of thought into where we are with the .5.
Okay. But, I mean, I want to make the observation that enrollment is down 20 as of today, and the proposal right now is to add two FTE teachers.
Right, what we did at Chamberlain, and this would be the second. Yep, that's correct.
So David, it would be a one-year add, right?
Well, again, we're at a point in time in our contractual obligation that anything, anyone hired after July 15th is a one-year, and what we call it in the contract is a one, doesn't always sound good to people, but it's a one-year, non-renewable contract. Essentially, that means that they don't get a contract, and we have to re-advertise if we're wanting to keep that position, interview process, et cetera. So yes, one-year only.
Okay, any other additional board comments or questions before I open it up to the public? All right, with that, why don't we spend a period of time getting comments from the public regarding this issue? Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Bradley. I've got two children in 4th grade, twins, separate classrooms. So last week, when we went in, we saw the class sizes, and immediately, Dave got a phone call. I called Chamberlain, which has 15 and 15. This is information for the board. Chamberlain has two classes of 15 and 15. Orchard has three classes of 20, 20, and 17. I also spoke to Mr. Kuhn, the new principal, I spoke to him yesterday, and he expressed to me optimal learning, the class size should be reduced, and a 4th grade teacher should be added for optimal learning. I looked today, the Brookings Institute did a study, if you reduce classroom sizes from 22 to 15, you increase learning by three months. So the class size has a huge profound impact on learning with the children. I don't routinely come to board meetings, but I feel quite passionate about this, and David, I was pleased to hear your initial comments. I've also got some concerns. This seems so reactionary. Here we are, September 2nd. When, David, when did you find out, or when was, when did the flag go up that we've got, essentially, I think you said, 73 children? And then I would, again, suggest if we're moving forward here for 5th grade, if in fact, this carries over through 5th grade, that we're not caught, what I see as a reactionary position. Is there any way, that meeting can move up from the 16th, and then what wasn't discussed, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of talk about, if we do go ahead, how do you split the three classes up, probably three, four weeks into the year, with friendships and class bonding going on? So I'd encourage the board to work as closely as possible with David and to make this happen. It'd be a great thing for the kids and for South Burlington schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Karen. My daughter is a 4th grader, and Mrs. Downing's class, she has 26 students in her class. I am an elementary school guidance counselor. I've worked in Vermont schools for 18 years. I've never seen a 4th grade class of this size. I understand from personal experience how enrollment changes greatly in the summertime, so I'm not surprised if something like this happened. I know that we are on the verge of going over the line and needing a fourth teacher, and the reality is, there we are. I can appreciate the fact that you have to look at numbers, and that across the entire district, numbers are actually down by, I think, 20 or 22, but that's not the reality for 4th graders at Rick Marcott Central. That's not the reality for my daughter. I could take up time to give you a lot of examples why I think adding a fourth teacher would be best for my daughter, but I think we're all educated people, and we can figure out for ourselves how that would improve all the students' educational experience. I'm very, very encouraged to hear that Mr. Young is suggesting a 4th grade teacher. I very strongly back that and support that, and I hope that that can evolve quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes?
I was in a 4th, 5th kindergarten, not kindergarten, 1st, 2nd, 3rd grade classes in South Burlington with 30-plus students in them, and my classmates and I turned out quite well. A lot of us are college graduates and very successful people.
Thank you. Other comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Chris Tudor. My daughter Maggie's in 4th grade at Rick Marcott. We went to the orientation day. Our teacher, we asked her questions about the class size, and we're concerned about it, and immediately, there were four parents around, we were all gathered around, we are all very concerned that this class size is too many, and the physical class size, I mean, you have your parameters there, you need to go into the classroom and actually see where these kids are setting up. This past week, my daughter and a couple of classmates couldn't all fit into one area and had to be put out in the hallway. It's physically not, I mean, it'd be great to have parameters to, as guidelines, but you really need to go in and look and see, and the teachers are not happy with the situation either, so adding another teacher, and we need some floor space, it's just, it's very obvious, so please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Yes?
I'm Amy Simone. I have twins also in the 4th grade. I volunteer quite a bit. I've been there for Hands on Nature. Even last year, with 24 in their class, there were things we couldn't even get to. By the time you've transitioned 24 children, you look at the agenda for this great science program, and you say, we don't have time for this in an hour. 26, I can't even imagine, and more support, more paras in the room are simply more bodies in the room, unfortunately. I'm hearing from my children that because there are so many children, what they're having to do is move them to project rooms and groups. So what it is doing is splitting up that class anyhow, so that cohesiveness is now lacking that you would have if you, you know, had a smaller class size. And also, please keep in mind that even if we do separate into four classes, we're still speaking about 19 to 20 children in each of the four classes. We haven't suddenly gone to 12. Our children will never enjoy 12 in a classroom. My children haven't been below 20 since kindergarten, so they just really need a chance. I'm glad this issue's being raised. We've been really fighting for them for this, and we hope that you consider this for them. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir, in the back?
Yes, just a quick question. If the decision was made to go ahead and hire another full-time teacher and a 4th grade classroom, is there room in the building for it?
Yes, there is.
There is? Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
Hopefully, I wouldn't have proposed that if I hadn't thought about that. Mr. Kuhn actually is in the audience, so Brent, thanks for being here, but you again has been, welcome to the new school, doing a good job, but also dealing with some dilemmas right out of the gate. Welcome, Brent.
Good. Unless there's any other final comments, I think, David, the expectation is the board's going to get a recommendation on the 16th, and typically, for those of you who wonder, we do get information ahead of time, so we'll be prepared to address that issue. Any other closing comments or questions from the audience? All right, with that, we will move on.
Any final, David, and David's going to have a final answer, and then we'll be approved?
As far as...
Your recommendation's going to come on the 16th.
On the 16th, yeah. And the board, if the board acts on that, then it would be on the 16th, and we would put things into motion starting on the 17th, as far, and likely, we'll go through the yes and the no, and do some planning prior to that. Mr. Kuhn and I will be working on that.
Good. All right, any other items on the superintendent's report?
No, that is it.
Okay. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, city and school collaboration.
Let people move a little bit.
John, can you get one more? Two, please. Thank you.
So city and school collaboration.
Just thinking of me.
We, Elizabeth and I, as you know, have ongoing standing meetings with Pat Nowak, the Chair of the City Council, and Kevin Doran, the City Manager. We are, we have been, we're on track, and we continue to do that. Obviously, a fair amount of our conversations are around items that concern both school and city. Clearly, some of the conversation, or a good chunk of the conversation is about, has been around the accepting of the Master Planning and Visioning document. Where are we, and where are we going? And so I want to certainly let folks know that there's a lot of conversation in that realm. Also legislative activity, talking about what are some important shared items that we can collaborate on, obviously, some that they have that are important also to us, and how they can assist us in moving some of those forward. So really, we continue to meet, and we'll continue to do so. That's all I have on the report. I don't know if you have other things you wanted to share.
No, I think at this point, having received the final report from the Task Force on Master Planning and Visioning, the board has started its work as of Monday in terms of developing next steps, in terms of getting community feedback, making recommendations, and assessing both the financial and logistical impact of any recommendations that we want to take to the community, so expect to hear more. All right. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, about the South Burlington Rebels, and I don't know if you want to kick that off, or you want me to, David?
I'm fine to just say a few quick words about that. Obviously, we are at a healthy point of conversation in our city, school and city, talking about the naming of Rebels, and it came, I think, through a multitude of ways, starting with front porch forum and engaging, I think, a good portion of our community. It's probably safe to say we have some folks here tonight that continue to be engaged in wanting to know more about where we are. I think from my perspective, you know, I put this on my superintendent's report when we last met, and I felt that was important, obviously, to let the board know that we were getting some communication specific to that, and felt strongly, and the board supported, to put it on the agenda this evening to allow for the community to weigh in. And again, we know that not every community member could be here. I think it's also important to say that the board members and myself have also got some other feedback from community members that couldn't be here tonight, you know, around some of their reflections around this. I think what's important for me is that we go about, and we're in a phase of listening and understanding the places where individuals come to us with their thoughts and ideas, and so I'm happy that we're having the conversation and welcome the feedback.
Yeah, and I would add to that, the board is here to listen primarily this evening. We haven't warned any specific action at this point in time, and we, the board has received a number of email communications, largely both in favor of preserving and in favor of changing the nickname, so I guess I'd like to use, first start with board members. Any general comments or questions from the board relative to the Rebels conversation?
I don't have anything to add, what you said.
Yeah, all ears right now.
Okay, so we'll open it up to the public at this point. I will ask, I'd like everyone to have an opportunity to speak, so I'd ask you to kind of limit your comments. If someone repeats something you agree with, please agree with them, and... So we'll open it up to the public at this point. I will ask, I'd like everyone to have an opportunity to speak, so I'd ask you to kind of limit your comments. If someone repeats something you agree with, please agree with them and move on. At this point, I won't put a time limit on it, but if it gets to be a little bit too long, we'll talk about that, but I'd like to give everybody an opportunity to speak and just ask you, keep your comments fairly brief. Yes, sir. And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Paul Jordan. I was a football coach from 1969 to 1990, and there have been some things written and things said that I feel reflect unfavorably on the legacy that we set when we were here. And I don't think you can really go into this, because I don't really care whether you change the name or not, but there are some things in here that were said not true, and I would like to set matters straight, and I would just try to set a little context of what it was like. When I came here in 1969, there was just a complete apathy. It was not a good program. It was academically sound, but athletically not as sound. And my charge was to straighten out some of the things that had happened that were really unfavorable in the football situation. When I was hired in the spring of that year, when I came here, I was taken up to the locker room way upstairs in the high school, and there was a sodden pile of uniforms left over from the fall, and nobody had even cleared. That's where I started. When we started in 1969, we were not very successful. We were one in three, but we had a nice group of young boys, and they worked hard, and all of a sudden, we came up to a day when it snowed, and the boys said they weren't going to let that stop them, so they went out and shoveled the field off on Thursday and Friday night. It snowed on Wednesday, and we were able to play on Saturday, and we played St. Johnsbury, who the year before had beaten us sixty-five to six. They were defending state championships, champions. We beat them twenty-six to six, and there was a certain euphoria that took place, an excitement in this community that I did not see before that, even though I had only lived here for six months. But there was a great deal of excitement, and everybody wanted a part of the support of the action, and that's when we began to get, if I had been able to choose when I came here, I wouldn't have chosen Rebels and association with Confederacy or any of that type of thing. And in fact, the uniforms I changed into white helmets that were gray, and I changed the shade of blue in the uniforms, white pants, so there would be no, I was aware of it and tried to make sure there was no association with that, but you can't control everybody, and there were some outliers that came in and tried to fly the flag and do things like that. Now, when we finally got successful, we went until the middle of 1972 before we were beaten again every one, two state championships. And in that, course of that time, the enthusiasm from the community was tremendous, and we had to kind of hold people back sometimes. And it was in that context that a boy came along and wanted to be a Rebel. He was Robbie Rebel, not Captain Rebel. There was never a Captain Rebel in the entire time that I coached at South Burlington. Robbie had a sword and gray pants, and he stood with the cheerleaders. To the best of my knowledge, he did not lead the team out on the field flying a Confederate flag, and to the best of my knowledge, nobody ever did. My team came on the field highly organized and disciplined and went to their places that they were supposed to be for the exercises to precede the game. There were always people out there. I remember the last time I heard a Confederate flag being shown around was during our championship game of 1971, which was played at Centennial Field because UVM still had football then. And somebody had it way back up in the stands. I didn't see it, but I was told that it was blown. That's the last time I remember ever having that type of thing. In the programs that we had, and I brought several with me, actually, I looked through these programs, forty, fifty, sixteen, eleven, and I only found one that had one caricature of a Rebel soldier type thing. Most of them did not. Now, the thing with Dixie, that came in because Barbara, my wife, started the Rebel-ettes, because this was prior to Title IX, and a lot of girls didn't have a chance to take part in things. And so she provided a great number of girls the opportunity to take part in something. We marched at the football games. She needed music. She had a thirty-three and a third record, and Dixie just happened to be one of the songs on there. So we changed the words, so they were innocuous, and, well, we really didn't sing them. We played them for a while, but after 1972 or so, Bruce Ladoo and Reg Golden were very aware of this kind of thing, and we all agreed, "Do away with Dixie," and we did away with it then. So the rest of that time, that was really not. We had decals on our helmets, which all it just said was Rebels. There were bumper stickers that somebody made, and I didn't see anything relating to Confederacy with any of them. We really tried to establish a program that was built on integrity, to win with class and to lose with dignity, and I feel that we did establish the kind of Rebel meaning. Rebel meant that to us, to us. It had nothing to do with Confederacy or any kind of thing like that, never. So that's the thing I would like to make clear as far as I'm concerned. I don't know what happened afterwards. I don't know what happened before 1969, but I wasn't here then. But I would appreciate you knowing the background of that whole thing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Other folks? Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Letty. I live in Elson Parkway, Mayfair Park. Been a resident of South Burlington for forty-two years. My four kids all went through the system, fifty-two years of education in South Burlington. Great education, great memories. I grew up in Burlington. I went to Cathedral High School, and I graduated from Rice. Our nickname was the Little Indians. We had some of the same feelings about our school as Coach Jordan just spoke about. We weren't as successful, by the way. We knew what the Hail Mary Pass was, and we prayed to our lady of victory before every game. Now, she was on sabbatical most of the time I was playing. She rarely showed up, but our nickname was the Little Indians. Where it came from, I don't know. Never thought about it and had no sensitivity to that name and what it could mean to others. I remember when South Burlington High School opened in 1961. I graduated the year before. I have had a relative on the faculty here from the day the school opened until today, sometimes several. My kids went here, I've had family work here. I have said nothing or done nothing to change where I went to school, and they did away with the name, the Little Indians. I had questions about South Burlington. I never said anything, so I am here not to point fingers at anybody. I am here to say that we are in a different time. You can take away the flag, you can take away whatever you have or the school has had, but the name itself Rebel is part of that history. You can't erase it. You can't pretend that it means something that it was never intended to mean. When it was adopted, it was adopted to reflect a certain message, and when you do away with everything else but you keep the name and you say, "Well, Rebel's just a word." It's just a word. It's more than a word. It's more than a word. And I think that today, this isn't a matter of looking back, it's a matter of looking forward. It's a matter of looking at our society today. I was in Selma, Alabama five months ago, following the march across the bridge, and I went to the Civil Rights Museum in Montgomery, and I looked at, and by the way, the University of Mississippi is having the same conversation somewhere in Mississippi tonight as we're having here about the name Rebel symbolizing what they have as their name for the university. I think their challenge is a little bit more difficult than ours. It's more direct and it's more immediate. Rebel is more than a name. It's more than a word. I didn't think a lot about what we called ourselves in high school. We were proud of that. I had no sensitivity to what we were really about, and I don't know what it would have taken to change that. I think it's more than a benign idea of a generic Rebel symbolized independent spirit, which is not a quote by a person, but from the article in the other paper. It's not benign. We may think it's benign, but I think we have to think today, that I think we need to look at anything that can reflect a symbol of the Confederacy. We may say it isn't, it's hard to separate it. If it came about only as the term Rebel, without all the other parts of what that term said, when this school adopted that as its motto, as its cheer, with the flag, we seemed to have been able to put away most of it and somehow think what remains is okay. It really isn't okay. I don't disagree with the thing Coach Jordan said in terms of spirit, of commitment, of leadership, all of which he personified and exemplified. What I really believe is that we must look to a community that is inclusive in every way possible, and to have a term that really is not inclusive, it reflects a history that I think we need to come to terms with. I went to the Civil War prisoner of war camp in Andersonville, Georgia on the way home. I have five relatives who fought in the Civil War from Vermont. Two died. One was a prisoner of war in that horrible prisoner of war camp in Andersonville, Georgia. And I'm not here to say we should think back on them only, but we shouldn't forget what they fought for. And somehow I think this discussion is rising to a level of being detached from history, from our history, from the history of our country, what divided us and what now has hopefully united us. And I would ask that some consideration be given to, I strongly support Bob Walsh's recommendations. I think we also need to have leadership from you, our leaders, on this issue. You can hear from us, from the community, and you'll hear divided opinions. I would hope we could get leadership from you to move us forward, not to lose what Coach Jordan built, and frankly, is still part of this school and this culture, but to move beyond the history that I think we need to move beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Chuck Hafter, 44 Barrett Street. I've been in South Burlington twenty-six years. Over twenty years ago, the school board made a courageous and correct decision to drop references to the Confederacy from the visualization of the Rebel nickname. In the last twenty years, much has changed in South Burlington. Our city is no longer a homogeneous community. We are much more diverse and growing more so every year. Teachers and students see and hear that diversity in the hallways every day. My two daughters are educated in the South Burlington system. My oldest came out publicly as lesbian when she was sixteen years old. She felt supported and valued by her teachers, administrators, principals, and fellow students, and this was 1998, so you can see how far in advance South Burlington really was. That support helped make her the wonderful adult she is today. I want all students in our system to feel that inclusiveness and belonging my daughter felt. Any symbol or program that divides us and makes any child feel less than special hurts our community. This is a great time for South Burlington. Exciting things are happening. City center is finally becoming a reality. I recently served on an eight-month committee to plan the future of the city and school facilities. The representatives of the school system stress over and over again the need for a 21st century education. This is an opportunity to discard a 19th century brand. I respect and understand the opinion of those who want to retain the Rebels name. There is a need for the keeping of traditions in our unsettled world. From religion to literature to sports, traditions and rituals ground us to the past and prepare us for the future, but some traditions become outdated and no longer present the image we desire. For example, according to a Wikipedia article on sports teams' names or mascots derived from indigenous people, since 1988, at least thirty-five high schools in eighteen states have changed their mascots, including Rice High School. Times change, and students can create new and contemporary traditions. It does take some courage. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Kaufman, and my family's lived in South Burlington for about forty years at this point, and this is an interesting evening because, you know, I just want you all to know that sitting with former legislators, typically when we're in the legislative process, we made great decisions for South Burlington and generally agreed on everything. Tonight, we're not going to agree, but that's the way it's going to be. I think, listening to what the coaches said and what Jim has said, I understand, but we've got a half-century of tradition, and obviously Rebels has different connotations by different people. People see it differently. I never thought, until the issue came up, I really never gave it any significant thought other than Rebels was identified. South Burlington and Rebels were identified as a unit. And, you know, to some people, once that Rebel soldier was dropped, I honestly, until recently, and in Bob's article, really brought it to the forefront. For me, I've heard virtually zero concerns about the Rebel name, and understand I'm not in the school system anymore, and I'm not as well-wired as we used to be, but as parents of three Rebel graduates of what I would call the great Pat Burke era, because I think Pat has led the high school to what we still consider the best high school in the state of Vermont, and we're still very proud of that. But to us, Rebels means, and has always meant, strong school spirit, enthusiasm, excitement, the ability to succeed in sports and in school. Rebels has indicated positive action to succeed. From our perspective, it's all good, and we love the Rebels. And, you know, from that perspective, to keep this brief, we think that South Burlington's proud tradition as the South Burlington Rebels, it's our name, it's our brand, it's what we're known as, and people have a right to think, you know, different words mean different things, but Rebels could have meant we were separated from Burlington. That's been indicated. Heck, the Yankees were Rebels when we fought the British back in the American Revolution. We rebelled against them. That was all good. I mean, if that had turned out differently, I'm not sure we'd be sitting here like this today. So it depends how you interpret it, and I don't think it's something that we should take overboard. I think it's something that we should continue. I think changing it is unnecessary. It's unwarranted, and to us, it makes no sense at all. So that's our take on it, but we feel pretty strongly about that, or I wouldn't have come out to a school board meeting when I haven't had a kid in the school in, oh, God, Patrick, what year did Andrew graduate? 2008, I think. He graduated from UVM in 2012 and still plays hockey with you every Friday morning, which is pretty cool. We've got, and you know, and that's all part of that Rebel tradition. I think it's great, we think it's great, and we don't think it should be changed. Besides, which I have an awful lot of Rebel logo wear, and I'd like to be able to keep wearing it proudly, and I think the only people this would actually benefit, be all the apparel suppliers are going to have to supply South Burlington with thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars worth of new equipment, and I bet that's not in the budget. So I think, seriously, we should appreciate the differences of opinion, but when the end comes and a decision is made, I think we should stick with what we've got to the court real well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
This is going to be very short, with all due respect to the last speaker. I live on Fairing Street. My name's Greg Weaver. I've lived in Vermont eleven years. Moved here eleven years ago, actually, from Washington D.C. Grew up in the South. I'm white, I'm gay, and I, when I first saw Rebels, the first thing I thought of was the South. Coincidentally, I attended a high school in Mobile, Alabama, whose name was also the Rebels. But that was back in the sixties, and that school got closed because they couldn't integrate it. That school's no longer around. I think the name Rebels is just inappropriate for this day and time. It brings back bad memories to a lot of people. It brings back bad memories to a lot of people. And Vermont's diversifying a lot more than we have a lot more than just people who lived here 40 years ago. If I noticed it 11 years ago when I moved here, I'm not the only one that's noticed it. Thank you.
My name's Jessica Pelkey. I'm class of 92. I was Robbie Rebel. New year. I was a cheerleader also. And I come from a long history of Rebels. My dad, my aunt, my uncle, my two sisters. I was originally supposed to go to CBU. And my dad said, uh-uh. I want my girls to be home Rebels. So we moved to South Burlington. There was never anything about the Confederate. It was about be yourself, you know, be the strong person you want to be. Believe in what you believe in. It wasn't, oh, we're going to raise arms and go fight. No. We were, it was all about school spirit. The teachers instilled in us school spirit. Be proud of being a Rebel. Rebel pride was the main thing we said. You know, I know times change. But this is history. This is a legacy that my parents had. And I hope other parents can have. Rebels are Rebels. We're not fighters. We're strong-minded people. And I think the school did this. They educated us to be the people we are today. And I think if you take that away from future generations, it's a big mistake. Big.
Yes, sir.
Hello, school board. My name's Gabriel Sharon, class of 91. Coach Jordan, you did your job. Thank you. I served in the United States Navy for 20 years. Every foxhole I've been in, every Humvee I've driven, every barracks I've ever lived in, I've seen Rebel flags and the connotations that go with it. But not once did it ever cross my mind that the Rebel name here at South Burlington stood for anything related to that. Anything at all. So I'm going to ask the school board one question. Where does it stop? Do we now go down to Camp Johnson and tell the Army that because they're wearing gray digital uniforms, that that represents Confederate colors? I mean, come on. This is pride right here. All right? That's all it's ever stood for, is Rebel pride.
White pride.
Exactly. That's it. Has nothing to do with white pride. It has nothing to do with black pride. It has nothing to do with green, orange, yellow, blue. I don't, name of color. Has nothing to do with it.
It's school pride.
It's school pride. And that's all it will ever be. So thank you, Coach Jordan. I appreciate it. Thank you, school board.
Yes.
I would like to acknowledge Coach Jordan and Mrs. Jordan. And Mr. Kaufman, I'm sorry that I have to respectfully disagree. But I know you did amazing work. And I, as a coach, and times are changing. And because something is a tradition doesn't mean it should be perpetuated. Just to borrow a phrase from Shakespeare, I would like to just say, you know, a rose by any other name would smell just as sweet. A Rebel by any other name would smell just as sweet as well. It's the spirit, not the name, that makes a person or a school or a community. But the name can be offensive. We, as, I look around the room, are a great majority of white people, most likely with white privilege, and don't necessarily make a connection to what that name can infer to people who have experienced otherwise. I am a graduate of South Burlington High School. I did ridiculous things to try to make sure that my kids could live in this community, came back to the community to make sure that they had the same type of amazing educational opportunities that I have had. And I feel blessed to be back and let my kids be here at South Burlington, the high school and the middle school. But I have that privilege that I was able to move here. Our community is changing. And we do need to acknowledge that. It's not, it still is over 90% white. But that doesn't mean that we can ignore what is real. And that is the impact that language has on people and on their experiences. And history does play a role in this. So can I just, I'm just going to read something that I just tried to put together. The argument has been made that the South Burlington Rebels are not or no longer associated with the Confederacy of the U.S. Civil War. When the southern states seceded from the Union in an effort to perpetuate the immoral institution of slavery in the name of economy or sovereignty, someone has suggested that our Rebels were wistfully linked to James Dean's movie, A Rebel Without a Cause. Well, I would like to suggest that we are actually Rebels with a cause. And the cause now is to reflect and respond to history and to move toward a more courageous, inclusive, and compassionate culture. The importance of this issue may not be, it may be minor in the minds of the majority of our residents and students who have been sheltered in a very big way in our culture. But the scope of our mission is to continue to build a proud tradition. It must be publicly acknowledged that, and understood, that as the South Burlington nickname, as the Rebels, is directly linked to the official division of the city of, from the city of Burlington into a southern sovereign community. And if we were just the Colchester Rebels, it would not be the same type of issue at hand. The facts remain, it is an offense to people. And we need to be on the right side of history, not the South side, in the name of continuing to build that proud tradition. I ask you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Tell us your name.
Oh, my name is Susan Farrell.
Well, I have to disagree with Susan Farrell. And I have to agree with Mr. Kaufman. And I appreciate everything we learned from Coach Jordan and Mrs. Jordan. I was not a rebellette. I am a Rebel. I proudly flash my colors. You want to see old high school programs? I saved them from 40 years ago. I read Class of 75. We are still very organized. We're still very proud of being the Rebels. We are Vermonters. Vermonters are proud. We're forward-thinking. We're independent people. We don't like to follow the rest of the country. We think for ourselves. And that's the way our teachers raised us and our parents to be. Please do not change the name. I was just down outside. I apologize for the way I look. I was outside actually directing traffic for a huge track meet down at Red Rocks Park today in which the South Burlington Rebels did very well. And I was cheering them on.
Thank you. And your name?
My name's Lisa Yankowski. I live in Queen City Park.
Yes.
My name's Kathy Palowski. And I've lived in South Burlington for 31 years. My son, Leonard Carnsworth, graduated from South Burlington High School in 1991. And he's much more articulate than I am. So I'm going to read a few things that he has said. "I remember the Rebel mascot. It was most definitely a Confederate soldier, just like the Confederate mascot of almost every South high school I've ever seen. So stop lying to yourselves. The South Burlington High School Rebels hearken back to the Confederate Rebels. Vermont has a long and proud abolitionist history. Slaveholding was outlawed in the Vermont Constitution from the first time it was written. The Underground Railroad ran through our state. Vermont soldiers fought at the forefront of the Battle of Gettysburg. Vermont was always against the Confederacy. This isn't about being PC. And it isn't about being a stupid liberal. This is about the fact that out in our country today, even though not in our town, people are still fighting and dying for the freedom and equality that our proud Vermont soldiers fought and died to win for them in the Civil War. It is long past time that we as a nation stopped glorifying the Confederacy. If South Carolina, in their rebel heartland, can recognize this fact, then South Burlington, in the heartland of freedom and equality, should be able to too." Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm an absolutely horrible public speaker. If I say anything that offends anybody, it's not meant to be that way. But a few people here know me.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
What's that?
Could you introduce yourself?
Oh, Dan Gerard. 55 years in South Burlington. I went through the school system. My children have gone through the school system. And with all due respect to the school board and anybody else who may be involved in the movement to change a Rebel name, the first thing that I'd like to say is, I think that if that had to come to be, as a resident of South Burlington, I think that it should be done by popular vote of the voters. I don't think that any one group of people should be able to change our history. I think if it had to be done, I feel it should be done by a popular vote on ballot. The second thing is building a proud tradition. South Burlington High School, that's been our logo for, since the school started. I have never, in the years I've been involved with South Burlington, ever seen the Rebel name tied in with a Confederate name. The Rebel name, to me, was always Burlington separating from South Burlington. And that's how it started. My sister was a rebellette. You know, all of us went through the sports program. I had some physical issues that kept me from being a Rebel athlete. But I can assure everybody in this room that I am a Rebel. And I will always be a Rebel. And I think that reaction to an action, which is what has started this, is a poor way for South Burlington to show who we are. I think that if anything, we can show the rest of the nation that a Rebel can be a fantastic group of people. Some of the finest people in the nation come from this school district. This school district is nationally known. And I have not seen anybody say anything negative about our Rebel tradition. So in closing, please, please consider the rest of the community. If you decide to do a change, please bring it to popular vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Marsha Corey. I've lived in South Burlington for 50 years. I graduated from South Burlington, my kids did. And I agree with Dan. I would hate to see us lose the Rebel name. But I'm just going to add to Dan what he said. I just want to make sure that we're including the kids as well in this decision. And make sure that, I hope they're being surveyed or polled or something because I've never heard a high school kid even, you know, thinking they're being, you know, they're offended or they're not included because of our Rebel name. So I just want to make sure that, I think it should be a community decision. I respect, you know, the decision to change it. But, you know, I also, it's really about the kids. So I hope that the kids are being asked about this as well.
Thank you. Tom?
Hi, I'm Tom Chettonden. I'm a resident here, also a father. Got three small kids in the school system. And I'm a very proud Rebel. My father was also in the first class when I first came here. He was the first class of Rebels. Nobody's ever going to take that away from me. I am a Rebel for always, and that's never going to go away. But I will say that after 150 years of being a separate municipality, more than 50-plus years as also having our own high school, I think the rebellion is over. We won. We were victorious. We succeeded from Burlington. And just like your comment just said, I support, I support my good friend Bob Walsh. I support a student-led initiative to just explore this topic. Let's find a nickname to also draw from Jim Leddy's comment, something that looks to the future without dishonoring our past. I think we can have another nickname and still have the same school spirit while still not taking away from our Rebel pride. We could be the Ridgeback Pride. Or we could be the Blue Sox. I'm just saying that as a Rebel, I'm open to exploring other nicknames. And I would hope the school board entertained that option.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear? CAx, can you hear? My name is Alex McHenry. I live on Barrett Street in South Burlington. And I have two kids in second grade and fourth grade at Brookmark Central School. I originally thought that the Rebel was a fine mascot for South Burlington. But after learning of the Confederacy and its tie to it, I think it's time to give it the heave-ho. Some say that it's enough to drop the Southern soldier mascot as it was done 20 years ago. But I think it's no different from somebody waving a Confederate flag and saying heritage, not hate. That is nonsense and it fools nobody. Consider what we are as a community. As a town of suburban ranches, condominiums, shopping malls, and plazas, we are probably one of the least rebellious communities in the state. South Burlington is wonderful, but not rebellious. So to call ourselves the Rebels makes no sense. There is no reason we should choose our identity based on our relationship with another community such as Burlington. We may as well call ourselves the non-seahorses.
We're better than they are.
Exactly.
That's why we're South Burlington.
Since I support dropping the Rebel, I've come up with a much better idea that I think will really take off. Since South Burlington is home to the airport, we should adopt a pilot as our mascot. I think it works well for us. Pilots are strong, hard-working people with amazing skills and command respect, just like our athletes. A mascot that is like that is unique and would be part of the South Burlington identity. Students could get armor jackets to wear their varsity letters on. We could all wear Ray-Bans, goggles and scarves, and fighter helmets at games. Maybe we could even get a squadron of F-35s to fly on the sidelines to deafen them and prevent them from calling plays. Lastly, our school colors are custom-made to have a pilot as a mascot. Sky blue. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Katie Ganu. And I have just graduated one son from the high school and have another son who is a sophomore and has been part of the school district now for close to 15 years. My son actually have asked me to come tonight. He said he was too shy to speak, which is, for those who know him, is not true. However, my sons are proud Rebels. And they think of themselves as advocates. They think of themselves as people who live on the edge and push the issues. They think of themselves as people who are strong and confident and feel good about their community. Never once in their time here did they associate being a Rebel with the Confederacy. And nor did my sister, who graduated in 1991. There are so many important topics that are facing our school district right now. You know, that all lives matter. That we do teach so well our children to remember our history but move on from it and become better citizens. And that's what they represent in the Rebel name. And that's through our hard work and also our teaching. They don't see themselves as Confederate soldiers. And none of them were hardly aware of it until Bob brought it up, and he is a good neighbor. At the same time, that was our mistake a long time ago. And they should not have to pay for it. If we want to go down that road, are we going to continue to call our American Revolutionary soldiers terrorists? Because at the time, they were. And to somebody who went to Lexington High School in Massachusetts, the Minutemen were considered terrorists. So are we going to move on and learn from our history and do better things and encourage our children to live that way and be proud of the fact that they are advocates for themselves and that they are proud that they can push the envelope and be courageous? Or are we going to just keep living the same things when there's so many other things going on in our lives that are so important? Like discussing race? That's a different discussion in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I grew up with that that's not a separate discussion. Somebody just said to me that race, this was a race discussion.
No. That's nothing to do with it. Nothing to do with it.
So I just need to say that I wanted to clarify my point on that.
Nothing, never did.
For some of us...
For some of us, that's not how it stands, and we're fortunate enough not to live in a place for that to be happening.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Luke. I'm a junior at South Burlington High School. In regards to the Rebels being exclusive to some students, I can confidently say that our school does not negatively affect any of the current students educationally or socially, nor does it discriminate against any students. Together as one, we are the Rebels. It unifies our current students, our teachers, our community, and if you change the name, we will still be the Rebels and continue to be the Rebels.
Hoorah.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is William Bugby. I graduated 2011 from South Burlington High School. I'm now a student at UVM. I just wanted to, first of all, say, you know, it seems like a lot of people still attach a lot of sentimental value to this idea of "we are the Rebels," which makes sense. You know, a lot of people attach sentimental value to things without being fully aware of the context and the history. Like, people attach sentimental values, you know, the antebellum South, the dig of, like, plantations, and, I mean, that's just one example, but, you know, obviously, this is at a much different level. But, you know, I personally do not take any issues with the name Rebels. It's the context that we're really talking about here. I mean, this has been said many times, but we're the South. We're South Burlington. We successfully led, you know, a rebellion, and we succeeded from the city of Burlington. So that's directly associated with the Confederacy, the fact that we are the South. Our colors are blue and gray, okay? So I have a prescription for that. I think a minimum what the school board should do is they should get rid of our colors as blue and gray, because those were the colors of the two sides of the Civil War. So I think the school board should take the step and get rid of those colors. I think that's the first step to do, and I think the community could come to an agreement on that, because then there will be less of an association with the Confederacy in the Civil War. And third of all, it's really about the history of the way we demonstrated us being the Rebels. We had the captain red, and we had the Confederate flag on the school buses as these students were going to games. I mean, this was pretty clear that, you know, we supported this. I used to tell my fellow students, you know that a Confederate soldier used to be the symbol of the SBHS, you know, while I was there. People didn't even believe me. I mean, people thought this was an urban legend, but this is just a fact. And because of the ugly stain of racism on our society, we need to take an affirmative stance against it, especially being the privileged suburban community that we are. And I just want to second the idea of a referendum. You know, the idea of a student-led initiative is great, but, you know, there's a lot of pressures on students, you know? Like, I'm sure there's sort of the hive mind, you know, especially in schools where, you know, some students will try to, and then that could become too competitive. So what we should have is, on town meeting day in 2016, we should have a referendum on whether or not to change it. Yes or no? Keep the name until, if we decide to change it, keep the name until we change, come up with some alternative names, then vote on those alternative names. The students should lead the new name. And I'm for free speech, I'm against political correctness, but the fact of the matter is, is we're, as a community, we need to make this decision, and we need to vote on it. And just to add lastly, CBU actually used to be the Crusaders, and some Jewish families were offended by that, rightfully so. I mean, the Crusades were a violent issue in history, and after this was led, they got rid of it, and now they're the Red Hawks, I think, and CBU's fine, and times change and people continue. And you can be a rebel for your whole life, but, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to change, because the symbolism, especially considering that we are a great place for immigrants who come here and we just want to be as welcoming as possible. And I actually just want to second, I really like the idea of pilots, especially considering the airport is becoming more and more a part of our community. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a, we're kind of at time on the agenda. Can I get by a show of hands, people who would like to make comments? So I see two, so we will accommodate, sorry. We can't do a repeat, sorry.
No. Bob wants to.
Okay, so three people, assuming I counted everyone. So we will accommodate three additional comments, and maybe you want some?
Thank you. I'm Maida Townsend. I live over at Patchan Road, and in 1962, I graduated from a high school, one of the proud and the fierce Rhinebeck Indians. We never gave it a second thought. We were the Rhinebeck Indians, we were proud, we gathered. However, were I to graduate from that school today, I would be equally proud of being a Rhinebeck Hawk, because they changed the name years ago. Thinking evolves over time. What was once generally not given a second thought, as my being a proud and fierce Rhinebeck Indian, never gave it a second thought. Nonetheless, thought shifts to plenty of thought and plenty of debate, which I checked out online when Rhinebeck went through its change. People were pretty fierce with one another. It made me pretty upset to see how people were talking to one another. Myself, I had not given our Rebels moniker here in South Burlington a second thought either, until I had learned the local history, of which it is a part. Ever since, I personally, personally have been uncomfortable with the image, as well as with the hard words which have been used at times in the back and forth leading up to tonight's meeting. Based on the passion evoked about this issue, the history involved, both local and national, and where we are as a nation today, this is an issue of significance, which I personally hope we can address. And then, there could be subsequently, as I think Mr. Young mentioned at some point in the last few weeks, a visioning process. And that process could help us work through and past the hard words that people have been using toward one another, Front Porch Forum and elsewhere. Could help us move through and past those hard words, and through and past troubling historical associations. It could help us establish a new, updated image, one that could be a unifying force, not a divisive force, to complement our interlocking capital S and capital B, which in and of themselves, I think evoke our pride and our strength and our unity. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'll be very brief. So my name is Francesca Ganyu. Katie's my wife. She said we've had two boys, we have still one in school that goes here. So I'm just gonna say that, as long as I've been in South Burlington for the past fourteen years, I have never heard anything racist come from this school or from the term Rebel, okay? I think that as a society, for whatever reason, we have taken this, we affiliate to this with this school, all right? We create this unnecessary turmoil. I think if anything, maybe put it to the voters, that's the best way to do it. Quite honestly, I think this poor school board should be worried about how we're gonna keep passing our school budgets? How are we gonna keep our teachers from striking again, so our kids aren't out of school for a week? I mean, if there was something going on in this school district that was related to racism from this name, you know, I could see this and completely understand it. But there isn't. There's nothing. I have never seen a student, I've never heard it, I've never seen anything, and I think this is just a big waste of time for your governing body here. And I'm sorry that you have to go through this. Thank you.
Thanks.
I've been sitting in the, I'm Bob Walsh, and people say I started this whole thing, but I really didn't. The way I got involved in it was that I picked up the Seven Days paper and read an article in here about the South Burlington Rebels being an inappropriate name. And I've given, I've written to you twice, and so I don't need to go over all the details of what I wrote to you, but the, some of the comments, I respect, Paul. We're both getting older, our memories are a little different, okay? I recall seeing, sitting in the stands, seeing a rebel flag being thrown gloriously to the tune of Dixie. I saw, call them what you want, the guy who came in in his gray suit, or whatever, with Superman suit, Captain Rebel is what I call him, waving that flag. And this went on for thirty years, okay? This isn't something that just happened once or twice.
No, it didn't.
It did go on for thirty years.
No, it didn't.
Because it stopped in the nineties.
No, it didn't.
It started, well, I didn't interrupt you. So extend that courtesy to me.
Well, you're telling a lie.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
So at any rate, what's happened here, from my perspective, is that the term Rebel has been firmly established. And the term Rebel and the racial policies that are associated with the Confederacy have been firmly established with that name Rebel. And it's been firmly, we have adopted it, and we have, and it's been firmly established that it's connected with our South Burlington High School, with the name. So, a lot's been said tonight. The elephant in the room is, we haven't talked about racism or racial problems, and they do exist, and they exist here within our community. And I think the time has come, because we are facing such a good point, good point in time in this South community, of change and city center and all that sort of stuff. Changing the logo of the town, trying to, a committee meeting to identify a new identity for the town. And yet, we hang on to this term Rebel, which now, as we saw in the Front Porch Forum and as we saw in the, as I saw in the Seven Days article, new residents to the town are objecting, are saying, what's this? They're objecting to it. They don't, they're questioning, why Rebels? And I think the time has come, I think it's time to come to retire the Rebels, quite frankly, and I hope you will do so. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any ideas on, David, do you have some suggestions for the board?
I think it's important that the board maybe have the opportunity to reflect on the information that's been gathered, like allow other folks that have not had the opportunity to weigh in, some of which you've received through email, and have a next step conversation with me around your feeling, given all of the feedback. I think students certainly play an important role. We have alumni that play an important role. We have administrators and teachers and staff, past school board members that also have a perspective, and I think we all sit here wanting to do the right thing for children, you know, now and well into the future. You know, we're working hard on master planning and visioning, and we're working hard on budgeting and things of that nature. We ought to work hard at this, too, to take it all in and make a logical decision. I know the administrators and myself, particularly Mr. Burke, has, you know, certainly facilitated a fair amount of these discussions, and I think he has an important opportunity to weigh in on this as well, and at the right time. So, I think for now, we need to digest and listen a little bit more and then have a thoughtful conversation. Would be my recommendation.
I do think it's been suggested by members, some members of the audience, but speaking for myself as a board member, I would like to hear from students as well.
Yeah, I think the students, teachers, and administrators ought to be heard on this issue.
All right. I will thank the audience. I think, I appreciate all of the voices that have come out tonight to express your opinion one way or the other. I do think it's a great reflection of our community that this has been a very respectful conversation, and there's clearly a lot of passion. And speaking on behalf of the board, we really appreciate all your perspectives, so thank you.
Thank you all.
It's fun of being an elected official. I bet a month ago, none of you thought this would be elected.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good to see you.
Can we have a two-minute break?
Yes, Mr. Fleming.
Loud clears here?
I have one thing I missed an announcement, so.
Get it warmed up a little bit.
By your side, as per. No, I didn't either. I thought we might have some more people, Patrick thought, too.
How are you? Wow, how's it going?
Martin, we're taking a two-minute break.
Cameras are still rolling.
Yeah.
Chelsea, you clearly have the last one. I was gonna have any time. I took this on, I was just like, okay, there's only so many things you can add to your plate every day, but, yeah.
This is gonna work, too, so.
That's right.
Challenging. Gave me a lot of respect from teachers in general, with a lot of faith.
Julie's son for coming, that was.
Yeah, yeah, and Diane, too.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. That's hysterical, because Diane sent me.
Did she? Oh, boy.
Right? Right? Good to see you. Take care.
That's a religious.
Bye, Jennifer.
They made the Quaker lady who was a religious.
Good job. Luke did a good job.
Only kind of a cartoon.
Yeah.
So.
Connor's going his hand.
So I don't know.
I can't stand it.
Religious guys, too.
You look back, and he'll probably say.
So what are you gonna do? All your free time.
Why didn't you?
I know, right?
When he's like twenty.
I know.
But you know, you gotta go through those strains. You know, whatever.
I even offered for him to get his cases off, and I'm like, you have a spa day, get a haircut.
I go anywhere.
Hey, it's all, you know what, that's great, you know, and.
How long? So I've driven down to Albany and then taken the train. Oh, it's nine hours, nine hours trip?
I just ended here, but I'll get one. It's a paddle and trying not to.
Yeah, I wouldn't pick that one, for sure.
That's exactly right. Let that one go.
Strapped to do it like a plane.
Yeah.
That's the last on my list of things.
They were all in the middle at night, you know, so.
We've done it in New York City for like a weekend trip.
C-SPAN?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna stop by.
If you want, you can say a few words.
Drive all but, you can get out, stretch a leg, you get a train, and it's kind of like a casual little break from there, you know, to get to the subway in.
Wanna come at nine thirty?
There's a train out between the two.
Wanna meet me at nine thirty?
Eight forty-five is the remarks or something.
So like, I thought.
Camera's running, I think, Mr. Burke.
The Maulers, you know. Of course, it's a microphone.
Yeah.
University Maulers, State Maulers, Blue Maulers.
The Blue Maulers. That would be.
I have heard some creative names, some creative options.
Yeah, it'd be more fun than that.
All right. Okay, we've got Martin back. All right, let's move on to Agenda Item Nine.
Go on, Mr. Burke.
The executive limitations policy reporting on 2.3 treatment of staff.
So can I just go quickly back while Martin comes to the table? I want, I omitted one area of announcement.
Oh, yes.
Which is by your side, which is specific to the S-BAC results, and what we've provided to you is information that's about to be going home to our families as a result of receiving it, so I think it's timely that you get a chance to see it. It doesn't have it broken down to the level that we're working on, but Stuart's been working diligently to work this out administratively. We've talked about it. We have some data that we're still working through and looking at and observing, but we wanted to make you aware of this. Obviously, this has us in grades three through eleven in both English Language Arts and Math, and us specifically compared to Vermont. So Stuart, I don't know, any quick snippet to this at all?
No, I mean, we'll give you a more detailed, you know, we are already breaking it down by gender, by social, by special ed students, and by schools as well. Overall, I think we did, you know, pretty well. I've looked at the comparison with other Chittenden County schools, and we are usually in the top five at the elementary level and in middle school, and top three of the high schools. So we're in, you know, we're always in good shape. We're also, you know, we'll have national data. I've been able to look at the Washington State's, the only state that has really released their data, but the Connecticut data's gonna be coming out soon. And so one of the things is to look at comparables, high schools of 500 from other states, which we've never been able to really do before. So, not 500 for high school, I'm thinking the middle school in my head, but, you know, seven, eight hundred, and social demographic be the same. So we'll have some other comparisons of data.
When you say seven to eight hundred, you're talking about enrollment?
Yeah, overall enrollment. So like, for example, when we look at some of our middle school data, you know, those middle schools have a hundred kids to our 500 kids, so even though the data looks the same or different, it's not the same demographic. So we'll be able to spread out further.
I don't know if I've heard that before, Stuart, that enrollment affects the results.
I don't.
And I know it's not an easy list to read, but it's a fold-out that has, and we've taken some feedback from you folks, you folks as well, around looking at what are those kind of required amount of time required to do some of this work as well. So, that, that sheet's got a lot of information on it. I won't try to summarize so quickly, but answer your questions if you have any on that.
I don't, but when we're done with this, I wanna, I do wanna go back. I have a question about attachment one that I forgot to ask you on the first one.
Anything else on detail policy three? Patrick?
On attachment one, this may be a nit, and it doesn't stop me from moving this forward. I just, the, the, we use two terms, I believe, meant to be interchangeable, immediate relative, which is in quotes, in the first line, and then in a couple places, we just use the term relative without calling it immediate.
Yeah, so employing relatives.
I'm not sure if you're referring to two different things there, or if you wanna kind of be consistent in that so that there's not a misunderstanding. So, that's just a.
That's a good point.
Unless it's an intentional thing, it's probably just a cleanup.
No, it's good.
Thank you.
Should be common, whatever, right?
Right, right.
I made note of that. Thanks, Pat.
All right, detail policy four, there were no changes, correct?
Correct.
Move on to five?
I think that's one I have a question on.
Oh, you have a question on four?
Wait, let me double check. No, I guess not. I just, I'm trying, I'm trying to be paperless.
I know.
And I'm telling you, it's a pain in the neck. No, I'm good with number four. It's the next one.
I went, I had the opportunity to go both ways tonight.
Yeah.
I'm going with paper.
No, I was good with number four.
So, nothing on four. Any, there were some changes, David. Do you wanna summarize on five?
So, on five, failed to create a positive organizational climate, connected to the ends. Under evidence, there's been some changes added here around ensuring that HR functions are based and that teachers are supported. And so, Aesop, which is our automated substitute and absentee tracking system, some of you, I think, have had a chance to learn a little bit more about that, but there's, that's been an added change. Under, under the evidence chart or the grievances, we simply have updated some of that information around the number of grievances demonstrating that we're following and or responding, and keeping track of, on page six.
Is there a reason why it's listed as a range for the directory?
Yeah, because, I mean, there's, there are different ones for different related things, so we've just said there's been four to seven throughout that period, you know. We haven't, I could give just some total of seven, but there's a range of whether the grievance.
Well, just for consistency of reporting, that's all.
Yeah. That probably does make sense. We could just drop that. I think it's a good point. Confuses the reader. Yep.
And that number can be likely to, is, is exposed to grow, right?
Yeah, it, yes, yep. That's, I think it's a good, that's good. And then the emails, which is specific to our responses that we've had. These are changes as reflecting the updates in, in the comment category, or what the, whether we've responded to those.
How do you decide when a response is appropriate?
Well, sometimes there's a, there's, you know, we, we get something in the suggestion box or complaint, and it doesn't necessarily warrant a response. You know, it, it's either, they're just wanting to provide, you know.
Well, if somebody's providing information, then.
Yeah, feedback.
That's getting counted in here, too.
And sometimes they say, you know, we don't want, we're not looking for feedback. We wanna offer this only. There are others that want specific, are asking for someone to respond to them. We've had a couple, you know, just recently, for instance, I did one today, you know, there was somebody who had a question in that, and that would, that would get put into, into this.
So, this is a year-long period that this chart applies to, right? And so, it, I mean, it's just a little bit hard to believe that in, that we've had one complaint in a year, because, because I made at least one complaint. You know what?
Send them along to him.
You know what I mean? I mean, I'm just saying, like, that's, it's a little bit, I.
Yeah, I, I think that's the hard part, is, you know, we often get folks that are putting things in that are, that are like questions-related, they're suggestions, they're, you know, providing feedback. And so, I, you know, the, the categories, I think, are probably could, could be pushed together or even further separated.
Well, I, I even think about the volume of, of comments that we had from, from this in response to the strike, and I, I don't even think this total covers the volume that we had, based on what I saved.
Right, and then, and it's, you know, these are the things that, that, that we see and we track, and we don't necessarily go into asking you.
No, no, no. These are the things that came from Denise to us through this, that I'm talking about.
Into our system, but as far as people who may have complained to you.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Those, those are prob, those could be small or large.
Okay.
And we don't, and I think that's maybe the.
That makes sense. Thank you.
I mean, this is always, this is work in progress, you know, I'm, I'm open to, you know, for me, right now, look at this and give you any sort of, you know.
Actionable.
Yeah, you know, but I think there's always an opportunity for us to look and say, could we further break down complaints? And could they be, you know, school age-related complaints? Could they be community-related complaints?
Well, based on this, based on this, it would be hard to break down.
Right, no, and, and, or, or go to comments, you know, what, what's the, you know, we try to give a little bit of some information on that.
Yeah, okay.
So, can I start my comments on?
Yes, you may.
My overall comment, and it's on, it has to do with the evidence, and I'm gonna get into some more specifics on that, is that a lot of the evidence seems to be static, and it would help to include information regarding various items that is a little bit more up-to-date. And I'm gonna kind of walk through this a little bit. For instance, in the first thing, feedback is utilized on a regular basis. The question I would have with respect to that first bullet point is, what if anything, did we learn this past year from those surveys related to how well we are informing and supporting the staff, which is what this policy is all about as you interpret it? So, I mean, that, that, yeah, there were surveys, but did we learn anything about how well we're doing on supporting or informing the staff? So, that doesn't help that much the way it is right now. Moving down to the, one, two, three, four, the bullet regarding, there are multiple opportunities for teachers to participate in decision-making on the school and district level. It'd be nice to have some examples on an annual basis so that we can see that. And part of the reason, again, is that gives me some assurances that this isn't just being cut and pasted from the previous one, and it's just there. And if we kind of get updates, it, it, it helps. A robust employee assistance program and progressive HR supports, are there any comments about or examples of how this was used since the last monitoring report, which would provide further evidence of how well we're supporting the teachers? The teachers and others have some degree of choice regarding school-based professional development. Now, this one maybe not, but I would, is there a way that you could break down what the professional development is that teachers took advantage of? Or at least the magnitude of using, of usage of the professional development opportunities? I think that that would be helpful for us to understand it.
Hold up a minute. So, can I just ask you a question about this? Because it seems like if, if he puts all of that in here, that's a huge amount of detail.
It could be in attachments, possibly. I mean, I would assume that that's being tracked, and it's kind of backing up the evidence here.
I guess the question is just how much detail we want in this report.
Sure. Yeah, I'm throwing that out for discussion, and, you know, and, and my suggestion is more is needed. You can reject these, that I'm suggesting certainly, if it's, if it's too much effort, but, but I, I guess, the other one, continuing education is provided to helping staff access college and postgraduate courses, moving employees toward advanced degrees, kind of same comment as before. I mean, how much is this being used? Is this something that is val, that is being used by the staff? There is an established and formal mentor program. Is there any details about that program, given how many new teachers that we have right now? Support for licensing, I don't know if you really need to have, how many were relicensed? That's probably more detail that we need. And the community support enables a focus on improvements in professional practice. I frankly didn't know what that meant. Even though I've read this before, I, apparently it went by me before, but this time it kind of attracted my attention, and I'm not sure what that means. Finally, I think, I think this might be my final one, is, well, actually, this is a little bit different, that there should be a recognition of, again, of the strike and how that affected or didn't affect the long run, affect in the long run or short run, the organizational climate. I think it's more important the longer run, because obviously, it was not a good organizational climate during the strike, and what was done to minimize that effect to the organizational climate. So, those are the things I have, and you may be right. I mean, am I asking?
I mean, it would be good information. It just seems like, I don't know, there's gotta be some happy medium between.
Well, I think I was trying to establish the happy medium.
So, I, what I'm thinking is that, in some of these at least, Murden, and maybe more than just a few, I agree, the sentiment of some of these seem like the statement is, you know, we're doing some good stuff, but the good stuff is not what's listed. It's just kind of a statement that we are doing something. Some, some examples probably are, are good. I'm, I'm trying to think out loud almost, in, in our roles of governance, do we need all the detail, or do we need some examples of the detail to show that we're, we're, we're getting the types of things that we're asking to be done? And I think that may be the, the happy medium, is some examples, but not an exhaustive list.
Yeah, and I guess that, that's kind of, different ones, I was asking for some different information. The first one regarding surveys are provided. Well, tell us what you learned about that. You don't have to give us a breakdown of all the surveys exactly, but, you know, to, to the extent that this is evidence supporting, this is why I hate the computer doing it this way, that this is supporting that, that we are, that you are making sure that the staff feels informed and supported in the services they provide, and just saying while we survey them is not sufficient. And how many samples you need, I leave that to you to convince us that, but there's others where it's just probably easy to, well, what's the magnitude of the use of professional development? What's the magnitude of the use of getting advanced education? Some of them are more narrative, and some of them are just kind of give us this magnitude or.
Yes. Yeah, I think some of the ones that are the, in those examples, what's the magnitude? That's almost a question of then, what we would do with the out, that data would be less about engagement and more about, you know, budget, and do we wanna take a different approach, which is, I'm not sure that's the role we should be playing on, on that directly in a governance model, so, but I'm just trying to think this through out loud in my own head.
I mean, I can see, like, on the, on the last piece of evidence on page four, which is the new Aesop thing, I could see us getting some detail or even adding that to a future agenda item, because it directly affects something that we've been worried about for as long as I've been on the board, which is use of substitute teachers. You know what I mean? But I, but I'm not sure, should it, should that information be given here? Like, what's happened as a result? I mean, and he can't do it yet, cause this is new, but like, in the future, should that information be given? If that's been an effective.
Like, what's the outcome of the system?
What's the outcome of the system?
That, well, that likely is a separate agenda item, but what I'm hearing is some distinction that would provide year-over-year progress so that.
Or change.
Yeah, so that there's examples that are, are potentially unique or measurable in a given year, cause we review this policy on an annual basis.
I guess I'm trying to move just generally in a broad sense, as much as we can towards, you know, governance where we are seeing data to, to determine if we are governed. That's what we're aiming for, for the ends. That should be what we're aiming for in the limitations, and these are just all narrative. It's not, I don't, I don't think this is really data.
The metrics part of it.
The metrics. I mean, these are, yeah, I mean, yeah, that's the, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this, is, yeah, give me some more metrics rather than just.
Well, and what I'm also hearing is, it's not that necessarily that every bullet point needs to be.
Right.
You know, needs to have data provided, but in, in looking at the list based on what you were talking about, Martin, I can, I can see several areas where we know the data's
That this chart applies to, right? And so, I mean, it's just a little bit hard to believe that in, that we've had one complaint in a year. Because, because I made at least one complaint. You know what?
Send them along to him.
You know what I mean? I mean, I'm just saying like that's, it's a little bit, I-
Yeah, I, I think that's the hard part is, you know, we often get folks that are putting things in that are, they're like questions related, their suggestions, their-
Okay.
You know, providing feedback and so I, you know, the, the categories I think are probably could, could be pushed together or even further separated.
Well, I, I even think about the volume of, of comments that we had from, from this in response to the strike and I, I don't even think this total covers the volume that we had based on what I saved.
Right, and then, and it's, you know, these are the things that, that, that we see and we track and we don't necessarily go into asking you.
No, 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 these are the things that came from Denise to us through this that I'm talking about.
Into our system, but as far as people who may have complained to you in person, you know, those, those are probab-, those could be small or large.
Okay.
We don't, and I think that's maybe the-
That makes sense, thank you.
I mean, this is always, this is work in progress, you know, I'm, I'm open to, you know, for me to, right now, look at this and give you any sort of, you know-
Actionable.
Yeah, you know, but I think there's always an opportunity for us to look and say, could we further break down complaints and could they be, you know, school age-related complaints, could they be community-related complaints?
Well, based on this, based on this, it would be hard to break down.
Right, no, and, and, or, or go to comments, you know, what, what's the, you know, we try to give a little bit of some information on that.
Yeah, okay.
So, can I start my comments on-
Yes, you may.
My overall comment, and it's on, has to do with the evidence and I'm going to get into some more specifics on that, is that a lot of the evidence seems to be static and it would help to include information regarding various items that is a little bit more up to date and I'm going to kind of walk through this a little bit. For instance, in the first thing, feedback is utilized on a regular basis. The question I would have with respect to that first bullet point is, what if anything, did we learn this past year from those surveys related to how well we are informing and supporting the staff, which is what this policy is all about as you interpret it? So, I mean, that, that, yeah, there were surveys, but did we learn anything about how well we're doing on supporting or informing the staff? So, that doesn't help that much the way it is right now. Moving down to the, one, two, three, four, the bullet regarding, there are multiple opportunities for teachers to participate in decision-making on the school and district level. It'd be nice to have some examples on an annual basis so that we can see that. And part of the reason, again, is that gives me some assurances that this isn't just being cut and pasted from the previous one and it's just there. And if we kind of get updates, it, it, it helps. A robust employee assistance program and progressive HR supports, are there any comments about or examples of how this was used since the last monitoring report, which would provide further evidence of how well we're supporting the teachers? The teachers and others have some degree of choice regarding school-based professional development. Now, this one maybe not, but I would, is there a way that you could break down what the professional development is that teachers took advantage of? Or at least the magnitude of using, of usage of the professional development opportunities? I think that that would be helpful for us to understand it.
Hold up a minute, so can I just ask you a question about this? Because it seems like if, if he puts all of that in here, that's a huge amount of detail.
It could be attachments possibly. I mean, I would assume that that's being tracked and it's kind of backing up the evidence here.
I guess the question is just how much detail we want in this report.
Sure, yeah, I'm throwing that out for discussion and, and, you know, and, and my suggestion is more is needed. You can reject these that I'm suggesting certainly if it's, if it's too much effort, but, but I, I guess, the other one, continuing education is provided to helping staff access college and postgraduate courses, moving employees toward advanced degrees, kind of same comment as before. I mean, how much is this being used? Is this something that is val-, that is being used by the staff? There is an established and formal mentor program. Is there any details about that program, given how many new teachers that we have right now? Support for licensing, I don't know if you really need to have, how many were relicensed, that's probably more detail than we need. And the community support enables a focus on improvements in professional practice. I frankly didn't know what that meant. Even though I've read this before, I, apparently it went by me before, but this time it kind of attracted my attention and I'm not sure what that means. Finally, I think, I think this might be my final one, is, well, actually, this is a little bit different, that there should be a recognition of, again, of the strike and how that affected or didn't affect the long run, affect in the long run or short run, the organizational climate. I think it's more important the longer run because obviously it was not a good organizational climate during the strike and what was done to minimize that effect to the organizational climate. So, those are the things I have, and, and you may be right, I mean, am I asking?
I mean, it would be good information, it just seems like, I don't know, there's got to be some happy medium between.
Well, I think I was trying to establish the happy medium.
So, I, what I'm thinking is that, in some of these at least, Martin, and maybe more than just a few, I agree, the sentiment of some of these seem like the statement is, you know, we're doing some good stuff, but the good stuff is not what's listed, it's just kind of a statement that we are doing something. Some, some examples probably are, are good, I'm, I'm trying to think out loud almost in, in our roles of governance, do we need all the detail or do we need some examples of the detail to show that we're, we're, we're getting the types of things that we're asking to be done? And I think that may be the, the happy medium is some examples, but not an exhaustive list.
Yeah, and I guess that, that's kind of, different ones, I was asking for some different information. The first one regarding surveys are provided, well, tell us what you learned about that. You don't have to give us a breakdown of all the surveys exactly, but, you know, to, to the extent that this is evidence supporting, this is why I hate the computer doing this way, that this is supporting that, that we are, that you are making sure that the staff feels informed and supported in the services they provide. And just saying while we survey them is not sufficient and how many samples you need, I leave that to you to convince us that, but there's others where it's just probably easy to, well, what's the magnitude of the use of professional development? What's the magnitude of the use of getting advanced education? Some of them are more narrative and some of them are just kind of give us this magnitude or-
Yeah, I think some of the ones that are the, those examples, what's the magnitude, that's almost a question of then, what we would do with the out, that data would be less about engagement and more about, you know, budget and do we want to take a different approach, which is, I'm not sure that's the role we should be playing on, on that directly in a governance model, so, but I'm just trying to think this through out loud in my own head.
I mean, I can see like on the, on the last piece of evidence on page four, which is the new ASOP thing, I could see us getting some detail or even adding that to a future agenda item because it directly affects something that we've been worried about for as long as I've been on the board, which is use of substitute teachers. You know what I mean? But I, but I'm not sure, should it, should that information be given here? Like what's happened as a result, I mean, and he can't do it yet because this is new, but like in the future, should that information be given? If that's been an effective, um-
Like what's the outcome of the system?
What's the outcome of the system?
That, well, that likely is a separate agenda item, but what I'm hearing is some distinction that would provide year-over-year progress so that-
Or change.
Yeah, so that there's examples that are, are potentially unique or measurable in a given year because we review this policy on an annual basis.
I guess I'm trying to move just generally in a broad sense, as much as we can towards, you know, governance where we are seeing data to, to determine if we are governed. That's what we're aiming for, for the ends, that should be what we're aiming for in the limitations, and these are just all narrative, it's not, I don't, I don't think this is really data.
The metrics part of it.
The metrics, I mean, th- these are, yeah, I mean, yeah, that, that's the, that's kind of where I'm coming from on this is, yeah, give me some more metrics rather than just saying that.
Well, and what I'm also hearing is, it's not that necessarily that every bullet point needs to be, you know, needs to have data provided, but in, in looking at the list based on what you were talking about, Martin, I can, I can see several areas where we know the data's available, we, we know the budgets for professional development, we know how they're utilized, so we could say, you know, of, of the 240 employees we have, you know, 60 unique employees participated in-
In professional development activities.
A hundred different courses, something to that effect. And I don't know how it's really cut, but that's, that's information that helps us assess utilization. We know the budget gets used, so that's not as relevant, but utilize, or how many are utilized and then how many may, maybe unique courses were taken.
Using that one as an example though, I, I would suggest for that, that I'd like to know how many requests there were to get professional development, how much did we were able to accommodate? Because that's getting more at how well we're supporting. So, if there were 500 requests and lots of people want, and we only could accommodate 50, that's saying, well, are we really supporting the, the teachers and the organizational climate or do we need to do something more, ask the administration to do something more? So, that's the kind of, I think, data that I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, or looking for to, to help us determine if the limitations are being met.
I mean, I think when this, when, you know, when this, this has evolved over time, right, there's a couple monitoring reports that we've done this on, I don't know how many times, but I know, for me, I can see, you know, this was, I'm going to just say a, a more exhaustive list, you know, of, and so, it was to, I think initially get at that there, these are some of the ways in which people are informed and that we support them in the organization, and so these are things that are, that, that are happening, whether there's internal or external professional development activities, you know, ASOP and supports them and ensuring that if they're sick, there's an effective use of, of getting a sub. So, it was, it was very kind of current evidence, and I agree, I think that we, at this point, we could eliminate, I'm not trying to say all of them, but it could be fewer with, with a little bit of detail behind them.
And I don't think it's bad to have some things just stand as bullet points.
And, but provide some, a little bit more detail.
Not necessarily all of them, where, where I think Martin's comment about is, is relative to support and I agree with you, I mean, I was going to the, going to the side of utilization, but you're going to the side of demand too. Is there, is there unfulfilled demand out there for, for services that-
That's, I think that is a good example, you know, we know professional development contractually, you know, we had, we had an amount of money for the whole year and I have to say to Stuart and Meg actually who are here, you know, that was really their work to say, we're going to divide it, we divided over, you know, half the year, we have protocols and procedures, you know, we know exactly how many requests we get, we know how many we, we provide, and I think that's a piece of evidence that would be helpful.
And I'm looking at the employee assistance program, we pay as a district to participate in that, so it would be helpful to know what the utilization is that might direct more of it. We need to educate employees about they have this benefit and how to access it.
And we get it, I, I get, I get that information back, I don't get any specifics, but we get how many people have accessed EAP, we don't get, I mean, I think we, there are some general categories, but, you know, obviously it gets into, you know, violations if it gets too specific, but we have it, so, that's good. I think it's-
So, is the board comfortable that maybe David revisit this and think about where there might be data to support some of these at a minimum?
So, I just want to, as I'm listening to this, and I, I think what we're talking about is that we want to see kind of the outcomes or the indicators that would indicate that we are, we do have a positive, positive organizational climate, not the steps we're do, we're taking to get there, but the indicators that show that we, we do have one. Because what I want to be careful of is we're not looking for both, show us all the things you are doing and us, and show us all the data outcomes, because in some ways I, I think we're saying we, we need to see the outcomes, not necessarily how you got to the outcome. Is that true?
I think the outcomes are more important, but I think, I mean, I don't think you should not show us the areas where progress is being made. I mean, if there can't be an outcome, I mean, see, some of the things that are in the list, again, that I kind of skipped over, is I don't think there is really data points that tell us, i- it is a little more fluffy, but I, I think that it's still valid and it shows that we are supporting our teachers by, well, actually, facilities are well maintained, you could put in all sorts of stuff about that, but I think just a, a, walking around the school, you can see that the facilities are, are maintained and you don't have to put a bunch of detail about that one in there. So, I get, I don't know if I'm answering what your question, I, I think, yes, the data outcomes are the most important part, but I think there are some qualitative type things that you don't necessarily have data points that also get to the issue of whether-
Yeah, no, I, I, and I think I'm agreeing with you, I think I'm leaning heavy into the out, the indicators or the outcomes that show that we do have the environment that we want-
Right.
And, and leaning less into the, this is what I'm doing to try to get to that outcome. Because really, what he's, what he's doing is what he should be doing and we're, we're worried about is he being successful.
Right, and that's also kind of goes to a comment I was going to make that this was sufficient the first time or two that we saw this, because this was kind of, it was new and we were seeing that, but I think we need to get at the point where we're seeing the outcomes, yeah, I agree.
Do you feel the interpretation supports the, the policy?
I didn't have a problem with the interpretation.
Positive organizational climate and then I go to staff feel informed and supported?
Yeah.
So, there's a combination, I'm kind of saying they're being informed and what would be some evidence to show that they're being supported? I mean, so, I don't know, is there, does that work still, informed and supported?
Yeah, well, I think the interpretation is fine and, and I think also informed, I mean, that, that you ask for feedback is a way that you're also informing them.
And, and again, grievances don't necessarily always result in what people might say, I, I suppose, support it, but they, you know, there's a process by which they can be informed of, you know, a question and a decision.
Well, and also that gives us, and I like the fact that you have trends for grievances because if we all of a sudden see that there's a bunch of more grievances, you know, we might want to understand why.
Right, that's the real data.
Yeah.
And I would agree with Martin's comment on the next to last bullet point, I didn't understand community support enables a focus on improvements in professional practice.
And this was more tied to budget, budgetary dialogue, you know, that we, the community that supports the budget obviously works towards that, but I don't, I mean, probably needs to be clearer.
Okay, so, is the board comfortable that David kind of goes back and takes a look at areas that support data largely focused on outcome? All right, we'll move on to detail policy six.
I have an issue. I have an issue actually with the interpretation, and I don't think it is reasonable because it-
The interpretation didn't change.
Well, yeah, well, you, people, you, you catch things at different times when you reread it again and again. It only addresses the timeliness of the evaluations. I actually seem to recall that I may have raised this issue before, not whether they are meaningful, because the, the, the policy is neglect to provide meaningful and timely performance evaluations, and you've managed in the interpretation to get rid of meaningful, they just have to be timely, and I don't think that's reasonable. You may want to define what a meaningful evaluation is according to the superintendent, if you want to give a little definition of what that term means to help us in evaluating the evidence.
Well, I think he's okay because based on his evidence, he's telling us what he's doing to change the evaluations and that should be sufficient for you.
No, it's not because it's, I mean, there's three, there's two steps here, I mean, there's, you have the policy and then you have to see what the interpretation of the policy is before you get to the evidence. You can't have your interpretation kind of in the evidence.
So, part of the, I think part of, you know, my thinking on this is that I agree that, you know, so one of it is a demonstration of time, timely performance evaluations, but I think where you say meaningful, I, I go kind of synonymous with what the evaluation instrument is. So, as we indicate that, you know, we have instruments for evaluation, certainly you can see what those are and know that the evaluation instrument provides meaning, you see?
Well, I would explain, I would explain that. I mean, I would explain that it's meaningful in that it's an agreed-upon performance evaluation that's been developed through whatever, however you want to put it.
So, that's, that's really, and I, I actually do see what you're saying, Martin, so-
It needs to be constructively critical.
Right, the evaluation instrument provides, you know, meaning and they're done on a timely basis, or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, what is, what are we doing, I mean, actually, this is pretty, this is actually pretty fundamental. I mean, I, I, we've been pushing on performance evaluations for at least a couple of years now because we think, I think, and I push this view, that it underlies a good part of the way we pay our teachers, that, that we agree that they can move along the steps and such when they get experience and additional education, but the third element of that is that they also are getting meaningful performance evaluation, meaning that, that it will help them improve as a teacher, that it will give them the feedback to improve and become better, and, and that's kind of part of the whole system, and that's why I think that that needs to be a critical part of this.
The, the evaluation mechanism as evidence is just not an interpretation. Right?
Say again, I'm sorry.
The evaluation form or the, the mechanism is it, is, is or can be an attachment as evidence that, of what meaningful is, but it's not an interpretation.
Right, and, and I, I guess, I'd be loathe to, yeah, just have, look to the performance evaluation and say, well, this is what meaningful means.
Well, and I think particularly since we've had that audited now and we know that it, it, the recommendation was that it changed somewhat, so-
Yeah, it's like what, I'm, I'm not going to repeat myself as far as what I, you know, that-
I think there's some added words here.
No, 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 I wasn't saying that too, I was about to get repetitive.
Meaningful does need to be in the interpretation.
That's a good thing.
I can add some, I, I can take a shot at, you know, providing, making that interpretation glean more meaning connected to evaluation and then, and then look at, make sure that that's, that's known. I, I do see your point.
And this is just me being a, a, still, I'll still say the newest board member. In the evidence, all teacher evaluations are on a four-year cycle. Do I mean, am I to understand that a, a teacher only gets evaluated performance every four years?
Right, so they go into a cycle, they do have goals every year, but they're, they're from a valuation cycle unless they're new to the district. If they're new to the district, new to us, then they're, they're in a different cycle of onboarding, and then they're in a, they're in a period of first year probation, second year evaluation, and they go into the cycle.
And we've had many conversations about the fact that in the private world, that doesn't seem normal or reasonable.
And that doesn't mean that if, if we can't put, put them on a cycle every year or we want to have a performance, you know, a plan of improvement, which, you know, we do utilize. So, if there's issues with me, you know, then that's, that's, could be an every year occurrence with, with noted evidence that we want to see.
So, I, I also guess, I don't think we can say there's policy compliance since we don't have the full interpretation of what the policy is to compare the compliance with, but I will comment on this, that I think when you come back, that you should provide some assurances regarding each of Denny's, you know, she's the audit, each of her recommendations, that they are being addressed. I, I, you said here in general that's being rewritten and stuff, but I want to at least understand that there, and then being addressed could be that while we disagree for the following reason, or we're not doing this because we're doing that.
Yeah, she, she had three main recommendations and it might not be a bad idea to list those on here just because-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
All right. So, on the overall policy. That's where we're at, right?
Mm-hmm.
No changes?
I, I have to just say a comment, two things on that. I, I don't think we can report compliance because we've now are going back to number six, but I will also add that there's not any kind of comment or evidence, and I know evidences can be in the negative, but that there wasn't untimely, unfair, undignified, disorganized, or vague conditions of employment. The only evidence I'm seeing is that the written documents and the processes are in place for employees and volunteers. Am I looking at it right? Yeah, and that doesn't seem to be evidence that gives me assurances that all those bad things didn't happen. I mean, it could just be a statement and, but that's just not enough.
So, your point is that with the opening, that a lot of the evidence addresses the further without limiting the scope versus the overall?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, part, well, part of it is that in your interpretation, you say that you've not, your interpretation of the policy is that I have not otherwise caused these conditions to occur. Well, that's fine for an interpretation, tell me that in fact that, that happened. And I'm not looking for, you know, detail because it's in the negative, you're saying this didn't happen, presumably, or if it did, and you've mentioned it elsewhere, I think you need to call our attention to it. Does that make sense? At this late hour.
Okay, so we-
Let me take- I'll take a, I take a shot at coming back and, and trying to provide, again, it's really in the evidence component.
Yeah, we had a couple little logistical things on language on attachment one, page five on grievances, but number six seems to be the big one, as well as addressing the overall-
Policy.
Policy statement.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, any other comments or questions and we'll table this for another conversation? All right, so we'll move on to agenda item 10, staffing and FTE trends.
So, this, actually, you covered a little bit the other night, and again, John, on my behalf, along with Ray Mann and some of our other staff have worked on giving you that update, you, some of you went over it fairly, you asked some questions last time, so I don't know what other questions there are there. Obviously, you have upon you, you know, the request that will be coming on the 16th, you know, that will, that will change that or possibly change that, depending on how the board may, may vote.
So, that's not reflected here?
No.
Yeah, I mean, my general comment on the, I really made it in the fourth grade discussion is, is that, again, within K through five, we are down somewhere between 20 and 23 students. And the staff, I don't know if we have the entire paraeducator number, but the staff with your recommendation on the 16th will be up at least 2.5. And net-net, I think, it will put us up 3.6. John, is that correct, over the budget?
Yes.
From an FTE standpoint, so, I think we, I think we have, again, district-wide student enrollment is up about, what was the number?
Forty.
Forty? And staff will be up 3.6, but in the middle school and in the high school where enrollment is actually up, the aggregate impact on at least teacher FTEs is less than one. At the elementary school, that trend is fundamentally different, that'll be up at least 2.5 with enrollment down 20. And I think, I mean, this is obviously a direct reflection of, you know, the, the size of schools.
So, it's also the districting and the-
Right.
AYP.
The AYP on forcing a distribution into the schools we probably never would have-
Well, I think we've seen the bulk of the AYP impact though, historically.
But it had, it had already led to an imbalance, okay?
I guess that's my point.
Prior years it led to an imbalance. So, I mean, the problem we have is we need to, we need to understand how to reverse that trend. Okay, what opportunities are there to do that? And, you know, consolidation happens to be one of them. Maybe not the only one, but it is one. So, but I think the point's well-taken that the aggregate FTE ratios is one thing to look at, but it needs to be looked at at major, major subcategories too.
Yeah, it's certainly enrollment in direct proportion to FTE is, is one. You know, we've been fairly proactive in our ability to respond and serve students in the most universal way without, what some other districts have been doing is I want to say, you know- say, you know, putting resources in places that don't miss, you know, are kind of, just trying to deal with the issues, you know, more paraeducators. So we've, we've tried to, over time, be more mindful of that. But that said, you know, we do have some complexities that come along the way that require our services, and obviously, the board knows about some of those. So that it is, I'm very, very aware of trying to hold firm on our FTEs, particularly when we have, you know, we're having higher turnovers. This year, we had forty-some month turnovers in staff. And, you know, with hiring guidelines, bringing on people who are going to continue our positive movement has been, you know, has been a balancing act of making that all work. So I, I'm certainly aware of this. I, I obviously may have put the board in a tough place, you know, even on nice light tonight, when saying, why didn't I maybe come to you earlier with a recommendation? But this watch and see and hope that, you know, things level out is, as you look at the trend data of our, of the enrollment piece, sometimes, and again, I have principals that advocate that I'm really worried, I'm getting all these, you know, people calling, and it doesn't necessarily happen. So I do kinda put a time period on that, which in some places, people are anchored about that, are angry about that, so.
So I guess, just, I mean, when I look at the numbers, there's.
Are you on the sheet?
I'm on your sheet with all this. It's that most, almost every cohort, almost everyone, the class, average class size doesn't, I mean, is not way out of whack. I guess there's only two that really jump out at me, and one of them is in fact at Central School in the, in the fourth grade, and I, I understand that as a problem. The other one is, I mean, initially, you look at and you think, well, all right, there are three teachers for forty-one students in the third grade at Chamberlain. But then again, I don't know what the makeup of that forty-one kids, it could be a lot of special needs kids, it could be a reason, I, I assumed that Holly had a reason to have, go with fourteen, fourteen, thirteen, instead of going to twenty and twenty-one. But though, I mean, that's, that's kind of, the, the other places, I, you can't, you couldn't really, I mean, I guess you could, could change, could've changed a kindergarten class at Chamberlain from three to two teachers, but that's getting a little towards the big side if you have to. So I, my point is, I only, I understand there's, now there's two point five more teachers, but it's kind of the distribution of the students that is causing the problem. Or not a problem, but I mean, it's causing the issue that needs.
I think if you look, you know, when you look down, I mean, it, it is when you, if you look school-specific, but if you look district-specific on the bottom chart, you know, obviously kindergarten at fourteen and a half. I mean, we have, we do have classes that I would say are out of balance, right? One of which is what we talked about tonight. And you could say, well, what about, you know, Chamberlain and a couple of those areas? And you're right, Holly has made a decision to actually allow for a larger fifth grade because of, you know.
Because of the cohort problem.
That's right.
Right, so, so I mean, even when you look at this number, that thirteen point seven, it doesn't necessarily mean that, well, there really shouldn't be a teacher in there without more information and, you know.
And, and usually, I mean, the, the, when, when you say you have, you know, ten more students coming, that doesn't always absolutely concern me at elementary school, because they don't all come typically into one grade. You know, our ability to absorb new enrollment in a, in a larger schools, you know, we're, we're pretty good.
It would be, I think it would be interesting and, and good information for the board to understand with our current makeup in all the schools.
What could we?
What would happen if we were in one school with these elementary school kids?
Or two.
Or two. What would happen?
And that would be part of what I'll, what I'll provide.
Yeah, one would be good, because it represents the limit of what you can get to.
Right.
Two would be probably not as efficient as one.
I get, the other question I have, this, this may be a dumb question, but, you know, is there a conversation to be had with, gosh, it could be any parent or guardian, but particularly parents who are enrolling their kids for the first time around, this is what the class size is doing. If you want this other option, here's two other schools. I mean, is that a conversation that?
You mean, school choice among the elementary schools?
Well, I, I, I'm thinking about it less as choice as much as, particularly when you have like these, this influx or anomalies that, I, I don't even know how the conversation would be had, but.
That's a good question.
Is, is that, is that something that is, should be even considered?
Well, it certainly, I mean, there's a variety of ideas that we can always consider. When you get into these types of things, you, I, I feel strongly about being very careful about our socioeconomic, you know, students who can and those who can't, you know, and that, that really begins to worry me around, you know, because, you know, a mom or dad can make the transportation, what does that do to our transportation system? And what does it do to, you know, equity in our schools? And, you know, I'm not saying it's always bad, and it could be orchestrated through a lottery-type system, but it, it really brings back to you that we probably need to be something other than the configurations that we are today, you know?
And, and I was thinking about it only in terms of addressing a short-term issue.
That's right. Yeah, and, and choice, you know, in some ways, did this a little bit, you know? For those, you know, it, it did a little bit of this change. And it allowed people to make some, have a, a choice, but particularly, it put us in the trouble bucket when we said, well, transport for the, for the year in which we're in, but we try to make very clear that once it goes away, transportation won't be provided. And so then that makes a transition yet happen for a child who said, hey, I, I mean, my, my mom or dad can get me to the bus, but when it goes away, it could be a problem. And that, that's not necessarily good for your learning community either, that I changed, you know, I came to this school and then I, so there's, there's some, some, some issues there that are, that carefully need to be thought through. And, and again, I, I have to say, you know, administratively, central office, we, we've had some of these conversations, particularly around the, the AYP and the choice piece.
That's what, I was, excuse me, I was just gonna bring up the fact that I know David on probably six occasions asked Stewart to confirm with the state if AYP would be eligible, and every time it was almost ninety-nine percent or ninety-five percent yes. And then in June, no, yes, AYP can happen. So this decision's made five months before that, and we try to be, we try to be conservative and go with the guidelines. So it's not excuse, it's just the reality of what happened there. Was it six times or? I forget. I have, I have the email trail.
I still think he wanted me to keep, we didn't, David, not ask.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay. I, I guess I would offer the comment that, given the fact that, you know, fourth grade parents have students in these large classes, and you've already indicated you're gonna make this recommendation, you, you indicated in your follow-up that you'd kinda look at a go-no-go alternatives. So I guess I would encourage you to, rather than wait to do anything till the seventeen.
Start to do some of the go-no-go, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I did have one, I mean, this is too broad of an issue, on the staffing and FTE trends, but I, going into budget season, I mean, I, I would really like to understand where we can not see the same thing we saw this past year of, of the population going down and the FTEs going up. And I understand the, the rationale for it this time, but I think it really needs to be a focus. So, any of that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would concur with that, Martin. The board does not wanna be in a position to, I'll, I'll use the word mandate, but that's a strong word, FTE reductions, but we're going in the wrong direction. And, you know.
We are, but I don't, like David said, he has no control over this.
Well, the one, the opportunity that you have, though, when you're CEO, is when you're setting the budget and determining the headcount over the entire district. And in order to accommodate some aberrations that might come up during the year, you have to make deliberate decisions at the beginning of the year to eliminate FTEs.
And the budget coming up is certainly the right.
Yeah.
And it may, and for me, it may not be, you know? Again, I, I know we're focusing a lot on FTE. I, I want you to focus on that bottom district side, and that, as we look to, even if we had one elementary school, I, I may be able to make some slight reduction in an FTE in classroom. Obviously, if I, if we're adding into four, you, you see some of the changes, but it's not like you'd see drastic reductions as a result. You know, when you do the math of the number of teachers by grade, I, I would, I would be hard-pressed to make.
They won't be huge, but I think they will equalize the class sizes.
No, no question, yeah. I'm just saying, so that volatility, the volatility would go down.
It's a dimension of the equity question.
But I, I'm wanting to say that on our staffing side, perhaps I would've been able to gain, you know, maybe two FTEs here in the end. So I don't, I don't necessarily, I think the, some other places in FTE distribution can be looked upon beyond just the classroom. So, you know, I, I think that's an important piece. If you, if you looked, some people will say, well, if you consolidate all these teachers you wouldn't need. Well, the district in this particular elementary view, I, I wanna be clear, you're not looking at like, you know, a lot of teachers here to, to bring that into, into the right equation. The volatility goes down, as I said earlier. I, I do get you.
The increases haven't been big either, though. I think it's trends, of course.
Hey, I, and I totally get this, and I, I, we, you know, we work hard to say, I'm gonna put one, you know, contingency teacher, you know, in here as, as my volatility mark, but, you know.
It's, it's pretty clear that we've moved to a pretty big divergence in class sizes.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, I appreciate the feedback. I do. It's not easy, but it's good that you're sounding off.
All right, we'll move to setting the agenda for the September sixteenth meeting.
So we have, you've got mine on master plan, and we're gonna have to add two point three back in. And what did we agree on earlier? We will have an equitable session on the.
We have two, oh, you're adding, this is Treatment of Community? Is that the one you're talking about?
Well, we needed to do, did we drop two, three?
We have two, two, two.
Yeah, that's good.
I think we were gonna come back to two, three for Monday.
Back to two, three.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. And I think, anything else that we've made agreements on, we're gonna bring back? Right.
So should we plan on bringing back the, a discussion about what the next moves are on the Rebels? Not at the next meeting, because, you know, there's a lot to get done the next meeting, but in October, maybe?
Well, you may wanna have.
It might be good to have a recommendation from David after you've talked to Patrick on a next step.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's gonna, I'm, I'm giving you the, the, I'm loaded right now, I think, by the sixteen.
Is there anything else that can come off the sixteen?
Maybe. And I, I don't, you know, I think we can probably get the ball rolling a little bit on the conversation. I can certainly talk with Patrick, but I'm, I wanna be careful not to overload you two on a.
Right.
Because we put that on, you're gonna have the same crowd. We're not gonna get through this agenda.
Do we know yet, well, as a board, if we really want to ask for some formal mechanism for student engagement? And if that were something we wanted, I, I assume that would take some time before we would get it? Do we wanna, is that something we wanna trigger, so that when we're ready to have the next conversation, we have some, or we're getting close to having that data back?
Well, my sense is that's what we've asked David to do, is to work with Patrick to give some feedback on what, how to get student feedback. So we're not, we're not prescribing it. But that's what I would be looking, that's what I thought we had asked for, was just thoughts on that.
Yeah, and I, I would, I think, I mean, some responses to ideas around how to move forward. I mean, I could see, you know, this being a, a Patrick piece, I could see this being an all administrative piece, I could see this could be, and I'm, I'm not wanting to make you busier than you are, this could be a, a, a night for students to come in voice in front of you, and, you know, that could be in part an option. Pose a question to the students, what, how do they feel? Provide some social opportunity, social media opportunities for them to respond and come and be present and state, you know, their, their thoughts, other community members. So I, I don't know, I, I'm not really totally wed to the right path. I, and I, I should think about that a little bit more. There's some very passionate community members, probably many who couldn't make it here tonight, and I don't wanna, you know, rush into kind of the next step. I should, I should think about that and, you know, use my staff, too, to ask about that.
Do we have any idea how others who have faced this sort of situation have successfully managed through it?
I have not had that conversation with, you know, the, the Rice folks or the CBU folks. I have not. So again, those are, I think, those are good, those are good suggestions. You know, what did they set up? What would, what did they learn? What would they have done differently? So.
And that, to me, would be good examples of proposed follow-ups.
One of the, one of these questions, and one of the questions I have here is, who really is the stakeholder holders in that case? Who is it? Is it the board? Is it the administration? Is it the, is it the school? Is it the community? Is it the taxpayer? Who is it? Who is it that's the real stakeholder here in making that decision? I mean, any one of us that could make, could make a decision, I think has pretty high likelihood of not flying whatever it is, okay? So the question is, how do you build a, you know, a, a momentum in a direction that you can follow through on with some certainty that you're headed to someplace that's a better place than where you are? Because otherwise, I'd stay where I am.
Well, that might be helpful in benchmarking with schools who have gone through it.
Yeah, if there's somebody doing it, I mean, I, I don't wanna make, have, make a career out of it, but if there's some quick way to get a read on that, is, here's some do's and don'ts.
But I think they could help with the stakeholders, too.
Yeah, well, who did they find was important to, to be sold on?
I think it's reasonable, you know, I think we should probably keep, maybe we wanna have something that comes back. I think if you put Rebels on there again, you're gonna get a lot, but maybe Under my Report, Next Steps, I mean, I don't know, we don't wanna drag this out either.
Just, just out of curiosity, the board ever adopt Rebels?
In the first place?
Or was that, was that done at the high school?
There were, I wanted to email to God, it was, it looked like it was not at a student council level.
Yeah, that's what I saw, so.
Which isn't atypical in a lot of these, you know, a lot of high schools.
So if it started there, should it be fixed there is the question, right? I mean, I don't know. Should it be addressed, should it be, I shouldn't say fix, should it be addressed there? Excuse me, I didn't, I didn't mean fix, because I think there's a lot of mixed signals out there about whether there's anything to fix or not.
Well, and I think, I think the level, the level at which, though, the conversation, the, the board seeking input right now is because it came to, it ultimately came to the board.
Yes, the public brought it to the board.
Yeah, as from public input, and we made the decision to hear comments.
Yeah, but I think we, yeah, okay.
So I would just, I, I think having David come back under his report to talk about it makes sense to me with some suggestions. I, I would just be thoughtful about reaching out to other schools, because the examples we've used so far are schools that discussed it and made a change. So we're asking groups that have an outcome on only one side of the equation about how they managed it. So I'd be thoughtful about that.
Yeah, in some ways, in some ways, it's always easier to make a change than to stay where you are, okay? Because then everybody has a chance to put a voice in the new thing. But, but that also reproduces a lot of residual chaos, right? Not the least of which is the budgetary questions and, you know, transitions and that sort of thing, so.
So we will put just a progress update under your superintendent's report. I, I'm looking at this, David. I think between your recommendation on master planning and the first reading on proficiency-based graduation, which I assume is necessary from a timing standpoint.
Yeah.
Pretty full agenda.
It's already a full agenda.
Yeah, foregoing something.
Do we need to pick and choose on the monitoring? I think community, we were pretty close, so I think we could close out two point three. Do you wanna take a little more time on two point two?
Yeah, that's fine, and put it on for the next one.
Based on this conversation tonight?
Is there, is there any possibility that we could do two point four by email or some other way?
Um, John.
Detailed explanation?
I was wondering about two, four. With the amount of work that's gotta be done for David to have timely consideration, two four, two point, sorry, two point four is kind of a stretch to have done any early. You know, it, it, it's gonna be right at the limit or, so.
We can move that one?
Yeah, yes. I mean, if that's acceptable. I did the supplemental report to have it as close to August thirty-first as possible so you could get an idea that we're doing. so you could get an idea that we're doing all right or not all right, but.
And that's in your packet, by the way, right?
John, when do, when do you need any Board guidance to influence what you would be doing sometime in the future, in the not-too-distant future about budgeting?
The only, the only guidance right now is, on the first page of that report I did, there was, we had the Orchard, um, um.
Drainage.
Capital, yeah, Capital Drainage Project, where we borrowed some money from the staff's retirement. And I remember there was a motion made, let's look at the year-end results and see if we should put that back into the staff retirement. So I have enough information to make a, if we put that on as an action item next time, and I just pull that information out, I think, and get it to you untimely, obviously, you could discuss that then. But that's, that's one, that's a real specific.
That's the, that's the current year, though, right?
Well, it, you see, the, the plan year goes to October first, so September sixteenth would actually be the last time we could do that and make a deposit into the plan and make.
To close out.
Truly replenishing, and we, we borrowed from that fund.
Well, we, we didn't really borrow, I want to make it right.
Allocated, I guess.
We budgeted more than was required, and we still paid him more than we required, but less than we budgeted.
Right, and this, this actually makes good on that, or makes, proposes to make good on that back to the Board.
So anyway, that's, that's a proposal, we could have an action item next time.
On that?
On that one item.
My question was more to the next fiscal year budgeting.
Well, there's some things in here that, but that'll go through two-four, and you'll see it there, yeah.
But when do you need to have that, if we're gonna defer to four? I mean, I'm just concerned now if we.
Well, no, it's there, I mean, like, the carryover.
He's asking specifically, though, what, at what timeframe? We don't want to let it, I mean, we're not going to let it go, but it's October.
Well, I mean.
Because we're October. If you do it in October, you're fine.
Yes, yes. Because the one that falls after is the budget, and we've slipped it, but not much.
So if, are we okay to shift two point four, then?
So, well, how would we word two-four if we want to get the answer on the retirement fund? You want to, we'll, we'll word that as an action item?
Yes.
And take two-four off, right? Is that what we're, we were able to do? So we'll, we'll amend the agenda appropriately so that you can act on the, the replenishment of.
Right.
Uh, the retirement fund.
Okay. All right, anything else on this? Uh, you know, one of the things I thought we might consider adding to a future agenda item would be the whole We Belong initiative, because we haven't had an update on that.
Perfect timing, I think, to give, give Susie some time.
When I heard you, yeah, announce that today, so maybe we can just put.
Yeah, as a future agenda item, yeah. I already have some plans.
Okay. Seeing nothing else on, any other future agenda items? I think we covered that. Any comments or concerns on the minutes of the August nineteenth meeting? Seeing none, those are approved. Any comments or questions on AP Order seven and seven A? All right, we will take a moment and fill out the Board's self-evaluation.
No, we, we understand, you're doing great.
Luckily, you got longer.
Oh, good.
There was a couple disagreements as far as not getting David's reports in advance of the meeting and part of the deliberations. Let me start writing a little clearer.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yes, yeah. As far as presentations dated expert opinions reflected varying perspectives of an issue which the Board was asked to discuss, it would have been helpful to have the administration of the high school students also reflecting their views. We had one, also, of course, letting his view, so. I disagree, you know, yeah.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? We are adjourned.
Great.